The time is 5:32 PM. It is Tuesday, May the 3rd, and I'm going to call this special city council meeting to order with the city secretary. Please call the roll.
Mitchell.
Here.
Rizzo. Ellison. Flores-Kale.
Here.
Bradshaw.
Here.
Parsley.
Here.
Tobias.
Here.
All right, we have five members present. We have a quorum, sorry, four members, five members present. We have a quorum. Next up, citizen comments period. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak to please do so. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and that you direct those comments to mayor and council. We also ask that you fill out a citizen comments form and submit that to either myself or the city secretary. I have one registered to come forward, Mr. Randy Pillefonte.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. I've come to talk to you a few minutes about the concerns that I have for the tunnel. The tunnel is an all encompassing project that includes the beginning of the tunnel, the end of the tunnel, the trail, and the tunnel itself in between. I was hoping to have a conversation with the question and answer period, but unfortunately, my understanding that I can only bring to you my concerns at this point. So my concerns are we're moving too fast. There is a lot of things that I think the city can do prior to entering into a $50,000 contract with multiple people to check into what we can do. My first question is obviously rhetoric is that have we talked to the railroad directly? Do we know what the engineering is of the railroad? The bed, the subbed bed? We can make a lot of decisions real quick when we know what the railroad has there. They've got plans as as built that you can look at, you can request, that you don't have to pay $50,000 for. They'll have all of the geotechnical information that you're going to need because I can guarantee you in the 50 years that land hasn't moved hardly at all, or 60, or 70, or 10,000 years. My second question is the situation with the developer. It seems to me that this project has moved so fast that there must be a memorandum of understanding that we would do this for them, that we would be involved in a tunnel project or a crossover project or a trail project of this magnitude. Seems kind of quick that we're moving into that type of situation. I don't see the benefit to the entire city. There's no benefit to the entire city on this. It's coming to take Plum Creek residents, which I am one of, just so you know, give them the ability to get to the shopping center. They can already get to the shopping center and people can already move around Kyle from that area. As I looked at the map for the city trails, we have two other areas that are part of the, what I'm going to call the city issues that you're going to handle as a city council for this trail project. That happens to be up at Cooler Crossing and it happens to be down at exit 213 where we're going to cross I-35. My understanding at this point that there's been nothing done about those two, and yet there are also discussions that those are going to be grade level crossings. Why do we need a tunnel? I guess my time's up.
Thank you very much.
That's just the beginning. You have some questions in front of you. I probably will be getting with most of you to get some answers. Thank you.
Okay, sounds good. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward and speak? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close citizen comments. Citizen comments is now closed. Next up, executive session.
Pursuant to chapter 551 Texas government code, the city council reserves the right to convene into executive sessions from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting. The city council may convene into executive session pursuant to any lawful exception contained in chapter 551 of the Texas government code, including any or all of the following topics. Number one, pending or completed litigation or to seek the advice of the city attorney pursuant to section 551071. Communication protocol with the city attorney and city manager. Kyle housing authority. 1119 North Old Highway 81. Kyle pie in the sky. Number two, possible purchase, exchange lease or value of real estate pursuant to section 551072. Number three, personal matters pursuant to section 551074. Before convening to executive session pursuant to the section of 551087, the Texas government code to deliberate regarding the offer of economic incentives to one or more of the business prospects that the city seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near the city. Project fire engine ready. We are now in executive session.
Meeting back to order. There was no action taken during executive session. There will be no action taken now. Motion adjourned. Okay, we are adjourned. We'll wait 60 seconds for the tapes to roll over and then we'll get started with our regular meeting. The time is 7:06 PM. It's Tuesday, May the 3rd, and I'm going to call this regularly scheduled city council meeting to order. Would all please rise for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The city secretary, please call the roll. Here.
Rizzo.
Present.
Ellison.
Present.
Flores-Kale.
Here.
Bradshaw.
Here.
Parsley.
Present.
Tobias.
Here.
All right, all members present, we have a quorum. Next up, approval of the minutes.
Mayor. I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the minutes for April 5th, 2022, regular meeting.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Tobias, seconded by Mayor Protem Rizzo, that we approve the minutes for April 5th. Is there discussion on the motion?
I have a question.
Councilmember Flores-Kale.
Thank you. So I was looking at the agenda going back to see how there was a vote taken, and I noticed this was from the 5th, and I guess I'm just kind of confused as to why the 5th was broken up on two councils' approval minutes. One was last meeting for the special meeting, and then this meeting was for the regular meeting. So I guess I'm wondering when the 19th, when does that get processed?
Jennifer Holm, city secretary for the record. I have, my department of two has been reduced to apartment, a department of one, and I'm trying to bring y'all the minutes in order so that we don't, you know, for example, even if the April 19th minutes were ready already, I didn't want to bring those ahead of the regular minutes prior to that. And so I'm just going in order as soon as I can get them done.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All in favor, say aye. Aye? All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, citizen comments period. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on any item to please do so. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and that you direct those comments to mayor and council. We also ask that you fill out a citizen comments form and submit that to either myself or the city secretary. I have a few folks already registered to speak. First up, Chap Ambrose.
Thank you so much, council. Appreciate your time, mayor. I do know this is streamed to YouTube, so I just wanted to say let's get some like and subscribes, hit that bell button. The city of Kyle, you know, it's important to know what's going on here, and I would love to, love to see that. My name is Chap Ambrose, and I can tell you with some confidence that I have more experience negotiating with the Boring Company than anyone else in this room. One year ago, they purchased my neighbor's property and they turned that into their headquarters. And I've been working with them as their neighbor, and I'm sure it's a familiar tune to hear that they made promises about light pollution, noise, truck traffic, fiber internet, but one year later, they've delivered on none of those promises. And I respect Texas landowner laws, and the reality is they don't have to do any of those things for us. What they do have to do is follow the law. And unfortunately, they have not been doing that. And if you look into the history of the company, and if you just look into the history of the last year in Bastrop, there is a pattern of them building without proper permits and approval. When the agency that governs that gets involved, they try to bully for exceptions and for cuts in the line. So I encourage you to talk to your Bastrop County counterparts as you're dealing with this company. I want to give you two quick examples. We went to commissioner's court February 28th. They had a proposal there that was not approved because of an illegal septic system. They built six manufactured homes for their employees, moved in those families, and did not have a proper system. TexDOT, four weeks ago, there was an email from TexDOT after a year of them not having a legal permit access off of FM 1209 from a TexDOT engineer. Again, with this decision to construct this driveway with no permit or approval at the location, location chosen, all liability is on the Boring Company at this point in time. I would encourage you to work with the AO on an engineering solution to mitigate this safety issue as soon as possible. Unfortunately, 20 days after that email, there was an accident involving a Boring Company employee and a Bastrop citizen. And so people are getting hurt now. And y'all have a responsibility. The world's richest man is here, the companies are following, and I'm asking you that we uphold citizens' rights and just take care of our neighbors. I don't think it's that hard. I think he's got the resources to do it. Unfortunately, they have not made it a priority, and I hope they do that. I wish them the best. They are my neighbor, and so I got a lot of love for them, but I'm not going to let them do this the wrong way. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, next up, Jay Koltman.
Hello, thank you. I'm here because I live in the Stagecoach Crossing neighborhood, and we have an issue of people using our neighborhood to cut through from state, old Stagecoach Road to Scott Street and vice versa. And it's become a problem to where, you know, there's more traffic than there should be. They're driving at a high rate of speed. Our neighborhood park is on this road that they're cutting through, so, and there's kids. I mean, it's all, there are kids all over the place. They're playing, the playground is right there. And so council member Flores-Kale brought this issue up, put it on the agenda, and we're hoping that you guys can come up with something or direct your staff to come up with something to where we have a permanent solution beyond just, you know, having a squad car or something like that sitting there. You know, it's sort of a Band-Aid. It works for a day or two, but whether that's stop signs or, you know, whatever the best course of action could be to kind of curb this, this traffic that's going through our neighborhood. If you look at a map, you can, I mean, you can clearly see there's, our neighborhood's just kind of wedged in between there. And so when the option is driving up to Center Street with the stop signs and the traffic and the school zones and all that stuff, or just cutting through our little neighborhood, it's an easy decision for people to make. So that's, that's my concern. And just one more thing, we, I saw the master transportation plan that, at least for now, it looks like those two roads, Old Stagecoach and Scott Street are going to be turned into four lane roads. And so I hope you would really just consider our neighborhood when you make those plans because as the traffic increases, the land that's, that's empty around us is undeveloped now, it will become developed. It's a problem that's going to get worse. And so I'm, I'm really worried, and a lot of our residents are worried. We have a Facebook page where people were sounding off about it and joking, our neighborhood roads, Conestoga, that's the main road through there, they're joking, Conestoga Highway. So, so yeah, anything y'all could do to take some action to mitigate that would be really appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, Golem Kibria.
Hi, my name is Golem Kibria. I'm a geotechnical engineer. I'm going to be the geotechnical engineer for the Kyle pedestrian tunnel project. So I can talk about the soil. If it is built with proper permits and with the acknowledgement of all the body involved, I think it's going to be a very good project. We are going to be drilling geotechnical boarding to see what's there soil wise. We expect to get Austin job formation, which is considered as soft rock from tunneling perspective. So very good condition for tunneling, self-supported and good condition for the tunneling in regards to the potential for caving and sloughing that may happen during tunneling projects. From a technical perspective, I think transportation is going to provide a multimodal system for transportation. It's going to provide flexibility for the pedestrian to cross through the rail crossing. So as I said, you know, I think it's going to be a good project, and we are really excited to be teaming and working on the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Shasta Bell Osborne.
Hello, good evening. I am actually addressing y'all about the Boring Company project as in favor for it. I am a six-year-long Kyle resident now, as well as a landowner and a local business owner. I'm a seventh generation Austinit though, so my family's been here a long time. We all are wanting the best for the area. We are in favor of the company. My husband actually works for the Boring Company, so there has been a lot of excitement with being a local resident. We are excited, you know, what that can bring for the city as well as bringing our name and just, you know, the innovative. Yeah, so I'm just in, you know, favor of it, and I have full faith that the Boring Company will adhere to any concerns that were being addressed earlier, and I think it would bring a lot of good things for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Andrew Crawford.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council. My name's Andrew Crawford. I'm the HR manager for Texas, in Texas for the Boring Company, and I also live just down the road. My father-in-law lives here, so my kids and he will most likely use this tunnel quite often because they'll be very close to it. To me, it's, it's very simple. It comes down to this. This is a Texas-built tunnel boring machine. When's the last time you could say something like that? A Texas-built tunnel boring machine digging a Texas tunnel with no new taxes added. I think this is a great project. I think this puts you guys at the forefront of innovation for an innovative company, and I am fully in support of it. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you. I have one final. Is there any, is there anyone else who wishes to come forward and speak on any item? All right, last up, James Irvin.
Mayor, council for the record, I'm a citizen of Kyle since 2006, and you might recognize me from my other duties. I wanted to take an opportunity tonight during citizen comment to, to highlight some of the hard work that goes on behind the scenes. There's a lot that goes into the, the public aspect of what everyone does see, but there's so much that goes on behind the scenes to allow these meetings to work, for the agendas to get posted. And this week is municipal clerks week, and I wanted to take an opportunity to highlight the great work that Jennifer Holm has been doing as our city secretary. Just this evening, you understand, she usually doesn't get seen unless things aren't working the way they're supposed to, and that's, you know, a testament to her that she's keeping up with as much as she has going on whenever she's short-staffed. She's been really putting in a lot of effort and a lot of stress and fret. There may or may not be one in this basket that I put together, but I just wanted to take an opportunity to ask y'all to join me in celebrating her during municipal clerks week. So thank you.
All right, I'm going to, I'm going to take a moment of privilege here and say something about Jennifer because I know that's what she wants me to do so badly. Yeah. I've had the same city secretary for six years that I've been here. I deal with city secretary, the office of the city secretary a lot, and I've said this before a couple different times to Jennifer, but y'all should know, I think she's probably the best city secretary in the whole land, and it's just a privilege to have you, have you here building a career in Kyle, so. All right, if there are no objections, I'm going to close citizen comment period. It is now closed. Next up, agenda item number two, presentation air quality awareness week proclamation. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, mayor. City of Kyle City Council proclamation, a proclamation authorizing recognition of air quality awareness week 2022. Whereas air quality can be threatened, can threaten our environment, economy, and the health of the residents of the city of Kyle. And whereas air pollution levels in central Texas were considered moderate or worse on the 36% of the days in 2021 according to the National Air Quality Index. And whereas children, older adults, people with lung disease, and people with heart disease are particularly affected by poor air quality and make up about two out of every five residents in central Texas. And whereas ground level ozone levels in Austin, Round Rock, Georgetown, the metropolitan statistical area, MSA, remain close to the exceeding the O3 National Ambient Air Quality Standards NAAQS. And whereas fine particulate matter levels cause the majority of the moderate air pollution days in the MSA. And whereas remaining in compliance with the NAAQS is important not only for public health, but also for the region's economy and ability to conduct transportation planning. And whereas the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency has designated May 2nd through the 6th, 2022 as National Air Quality Awareness Week. And whereas the city of Kyle supports the effort of the Central Texas Clean Air Coalition and U.S. Environmental Protection Agency to promote air quality. Now therefore, the city of Kyle, the city of Kyle does hereby proclaim May 2nd through the 6th as 2022 as Air Quality Awareness Week in the city of Kyle and encourages all residents and employees to educate themselves about air quality, including visiting CAPCOG's Air Quality Central Texas website and aircentraltexas.org, and promote the air quality and air quality awareness within our community. Signed and entered on this third day of May 2022, Kyle City Council. Just to close, I want to say that this is something that's really important to me, being a member representing the city of Kyle, city council on the Clean Air Coalition has been a privilege, and I've actually been serving as the second vice chair on that committee. And the amount of information that comes out has been great. We did see the levels go down during COVID because of the commuting slowing down, but levels are slowly rising again, and it's something to, for us as a city to take note and see what we can do with promoting with maybe even changing our habits when we cut grass, or when we're driving. So there's things that we can do as a community to make our quality a little better. And one of the things that's going to be on the agenda later is that we are now going to have an air quality monitoring system in place here in the city of Kyle, and that's going to help us get more real-time information and do a real study for once. We've never had a study, air quality study in the city of Kyle, and that's coming forward. So thank you all. Appreciate it.
All right. Anything to add? All right, next up, agenda item number three, National Economic Development Week proclamation. Councilmember Ellison.
Just as a note, agenda item number four, I've been asked to postpone until our second meeting, so just a heads up on that. But on a agenda item three, the National Economic Development Week proclamation, it's my honor to read this proclamation developed by our managing economic development, Victoria Vargas. So thank you for the selection. Really appreciate everything that our economic development department does with Lauren and Diana and Victoria, the great work that they do each year, and certainly proud of that department. City Council proclamation, recognizing the positive impact of economic development on the economic health of the United States and the state of Texas and the city of Kyle. Whereas the Kyle Economic Development Department has been promoting economic well-being and quality of life for their communities by creating, retaining, and expanding high-quality jobs that facilitate growth, enhance wealth, and provide a stable tax base. And whereas Kyle Economic Development stimulates and incubates entrepreneurship to establish, to help establish the next generation of new businesses and support existing business with support and resources. And whereas Kyle Economic Development works in partnership with local school districts, community colleges, workforce boards, and commissions to amplify workforce training and to ensure a workforce-ready community. And whereas Kyle Economic Development is dedicated to setting the stage for development success in economic development as well as real estate development through its economic development strategic plan. And whereas Kyle Economic Development was a catalyst to significant commercial capital investment in the community along the Texas Innovation Corridor over the past 16 years. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of Kyle do hereby recognize May 9th through 13th, 2022 as National Economic Development Week and to commend the work done by the Economic Development Department led by Diana Torres and supported by Victoria Vargas and Lauren Lyons. In the city of Kyle, and remind individuals of the importance of these initiatives in expanding career opportunities, improving quality of life, and encouraging strategic growth through an environmentally responsible and community-building approach. Be it further proclaimed that the mayor and city council is authorized and directed to transmit an appropriate copy of this resolution to the International Economic Development Council. In testimony whereof, the mayor and city council of the city has herein to subscribe their names and have called the city seal of the city of Kyle to be here to, here and to affixed in the city of Kyle this third day of May 2022. Once again, just want a big shout of support for the three individuals in our Economic Development Department and the hard work they do throughout the years. We've had a great year last year, and we've had some strong years ever since I've been on council and watching our city through this leadership and this growing team. So thank you, council, for the support, and thank you, economic development team.
All right, thank you. Does anybody have anything they'd like to add? Mayor Protem.
Just one thing, I just want to thank Diana, her team, for all the wonderful work that they've done, and you've got one great feather in your hat that every resident, every time I meet them in the public, you can hang on your hat is, you got Costco. Great job. Every resident in Kyle loves you for that. Thank you.
Councilmember Flores-Kale.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to our development team, and they gave us these sweet little gift bags, and in it, there's a card, and I just want to make sure there's, is there more than three people in that department? That's, that's it? Okay, because there was three names, and I was like, no way, there's only three people in the economic department, but you guys are killing it for having just three. I really appreciate everything that you guys do, and I, you know, we've met on an outside level as well, and I think not only are you guys great for the city, but you're also really good, genuinely good people. So thank you for everything that you do.
All right, anyone else? All right, you want to come up for a photo? Let's do it. And then Diana, do you have anything, do you want to say about this out here? Are we?
I also want to recognize, I have a couple of board members here for the Kyle Economic Development Board. I have Brian and Tony. You all know them very well, Tony Spano, and, oh my gosh, Brian.
Deegler.
Yes, thank you.
I wasn't going to give it to you.
I have a moment.
We even had a project named after him.
That's right. And we have cookies out in the lobby, so cookies and water if you want to snack. Feel free to go out there and grab some.
Okay, so we'll, if we can bring the balloons in a little bit more. Okay, so if we can bring the balloons in a little bit more. Okay, here we go. Okay, ready, one, two, three. One more. Yay.
All right, next up, Presentation from AT&amp;T Regarding Its General Build Plan. The service is offered procedures for notifying residents and how it will address any issues. Kathy Kerbow.
Good evening, I'm Kelly Kerbow with AT&amp;T. Unfortunately, we don't have balloons or anything like that. But we do appreciate your time for giving us a few minutes to come and talk to y'all. We're really excited to be bringing state-of-the-art fiber optic broadband to Kyle residents and businesses. In just a sec, if God don't mind, I'd like to ask my colleagues Brad Lowry and Sean Kemp from our network organization. We have a real brief presentation we would like to walk through with y'all. You know, they're gonna talk about the construction process, the services, and importantly, everything that we'll do to minimize any kind of disruptions for, for your residents. And then what we'll do to handle any kind of issues that come up. So, but before we get to that, I also want to thank all of, all of y'all, the city staff, the council, all of you for working with us. We really appreciate everything you're doing to help us get this done. And I won't take any more of your time. I'll, I'll have to turn it over to the experts now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The next slide, please. The speeds that we'll be offering on our fiber optics is gonna be, everything is symmetrical up and down, 300 megabits per second, 500, 1 gig, 2 gig, and 5 gig. On the 1 gig, 2 gig, and 5 gig, there is our state-of-the-art modem, which if you had any dark spots or any areas in your home where Wi-Fi was difficult, this should be the remedy for it. HBO Max is also included with the 1 gig, 2 gig, and 5 gig. So, next slide. This slide is a reiteration of the first one. The only difference is that it also mentions that we have the Active Armor, which is something, a firewall that is provided with the services. Next slide, please. So the timeline for the placement is gonna be, typically takes us six months from the time we start till the time it's turned up. Six to eight weeks on the design side, product meeting at this time undetermined, 30 days for material ordering. And we have the placement usually takes 90 days. And then we have the, it takes our splicing is 30 days. And then we have turn up. And then we'll also have sales events will, will start happening around the 30-day period of the splicing. All right, next slide. Okay, and these are some of the facilities that will be placed. We have the PFPs, our Primary Flexibility Point, the terminal that we placed. That's, we will probably be placing 864s in your area. Those are the largest of the PFPs that we place. And also, we, in the picture, we have some of our terminals and our books closures. Everything is gonna be, other than the boxes, will be ground level. And again, this is just showing the RPFP, our, our handholds. And then we'll turn it over to my friend Brad.
I will add on the equipment, on the PFPs, everything is passive. There's no power required. The only electronics that we'll be utilizing that require power are located in an existing AT&amp;T asset right down the road. Is this main or center street? Right down here on the left, so. That's the only power required on anything that we deploy in the field. So, no power request or any permitting in terms of power required. On the construction side, I'm not gonna tell this team anything they haven't seen on the construction side. A lot of activity, a lot of growth in the city out there. It's busy. I will say, from an AT&amp;T perspective, this is our first touch point with the customer. This is our first impression with the customer. We have to leverage this from a customer experience perspective. We have to win the customer on the construction piece of it.
That's insightful. I like that.
We will deploy collateral door hangers 48 to 90, or 48 to 96 hours before any construction activity commences in a community. We usually permit in clusters of homes, 250 to 500 homes at a time. So, we will deploy collateral on every impacted residence door. One side of the collateral is about the fiber product itself. The other piece of the door hanger will take you, will take you to a construction help desk, which I'll touch on on the next slide. It's one, one of the ways that we support the construction activities in the community. Obviously, we have to get locates, 811, 48 hours before any construction activities commence. Locates are good for 14 days, that's standard practice. We will be placing fiber optic facilities at least 24 inches in depth or greater. Generally, it's 36, but we say 24. Got to go up and down, we got to miss other utilities, so 24 inches or greater. How we support the build, again, I'll touch on on the next slide. Put it, it's primarily through the construction help desk. We have contract coordinators that manage our contract resources in the field. And then we have our AT&amp;T External Affairs Partners. That's Kelly.
We're talking earlier about people, talking about how long they've lived here. I've lived in, I don't live in Kyle, I live in San Marcos, but I've lived in Hayes County for 30 years or so now. I'm just down the road. If there's something that comes up, I'm 20 minutes away. Lord, Lord willing and I, 35, willing, I can be here to, to help.
From a contractor perspective, obviously, it's implied that they will restore right away MUEPUEs to, and surrounding property to the same shape or condition it was prior to construction starting. After all, construction work has completed. We do use AT&amp;T telco-badged employees to splice fiber. A lot of the fiber optic network is connectorized, meaning it's plug-and-play. So, we have, we have some splice points within the network, generally on laterals that are going down streets. But everything that is generally moving through the community, going through the community, is plug-and-play. So, all the terminals that connect to the main infrastructure on the fiber, it's plug-and-play. They got a tail when we plug terminals in, the terminals feed the customers home. After that's done, we turn it up and we supply, provide broadband to the community and to the customers. Next slide, how we support the build. This is a big one, I'm sure where the interest is. Again, we deploy collateral 48 to 96 hours before any construction activities start. We love to leverage the HOAs and the social media platforms that they bring with them. So, I think the city during our initial meeting said we can partner on HOA contacts, which we love to do. Obviously, the damage prevention and mitigation is of utmost importance to AT&amp;T. And then we do leverage an experienced vendor pool that we utilize in Austin. I hate to say it, but it's not the easiest place to work in in Austin. We do, and we will use those same resources and contractors that we utilize for this same kind of build out in Austin and Kyle. Construction help desk, it's a local team, it's a manager team located in Texas. And on the back of the door hanger is a local number, it's a 512 number. It will take you to a gentleman named Jose Morales. He's located in the DFW area, but he has direct contact, direct control over the vendor themselves. So, if a customer has an inquiry, whether it's about the fiber product itself, the activity that's taking place in the community, a restoral concern, a damage concern, I will tell you, the most damages we will see are to sprinkler systems. So, that's the big one. Generally, not gas, not power, not water lines. But it's the sprinkler systems that we generally get because they can't be located. So, Jose handles all the inquiries with the customer. Then he manages that through the vendor and the contract coordinator. On the construction help desk, we have SLAs. Each customer inquiry is owed a response, an initial response, within 24 hours. After that, we try to restore, correct any kind of damages within 14 days. 14 calendar days, not business days, but 14 calendar days. So all restorals, damages, everything, back to the way they were within 14 days. And, again, we'd love to leverage the HOAs because that gets the construction help desk number out there, the contacts out there, door hangers, you know, kids run off with them, wind blows them away, whatever. Any way that we can get the construction help desk contacts out there, we want to leverage that opportunity. Next slide. I think that's it. Anybody? All right. All right, at least there's two of us.
I'll turn it over in just a second, but I'll say that there's not, there's been, maybe Costco would be the number one request. But outside of that, the most requested thing is for options to be provided to our community for internet. So, for a long time, people have felt that, that there was not enough options for the services to be provided. And so, very glad to see you here from that standpoint. Do have a lot of questions about our data, mobile, mobile data and call, call service going on right now. It's like nothing I've ever seen before as far as us, but I-
We have work in progress from a wireless perspective as well. We got some new site builds that are on plan for 2022. I think one to the northeast side of town, one to, or, one to the northwest side of town, one to the east side of 35, which should help with some of the capacity issues in Kyle. It's a two-year build out on the wireless side. The growth is tremendous here. It takes time. We understand we have capacity issues on the wireless side. We are trying to catch up with it. It's just, it's a lot of traffic going on.
Questions, comments? Mayor Pro Tem.
Just real quick, I wouldn't be just if I didn't do this. So, but you've kind of answered it already. The question I always ask all the providers come in, just making sure that we address any issues that come for you from the citizens in a timely manner. Make sure that the city has contact information. Kelly, you're local, so that's great. I'm glad that you're local. If we get that, your information to the rest of the council would be great in case they get some concerns from a resident in their district. I think that's pretty much the only thing we've ever experienced was when construction comes in, making sure everything's put back in place the way it was when you got there. So that's the only concern that council really has had. And thank you for coming to Kyle, I appreciate it a lot. Thank you for the option. I know our Matt, our IT director, was really excited about the speeds. So, that's above my pay grade, but he was really excited. When Matt gets excited, he didn't get excited about a lot of things, but he was really excited about the speed. So thank y'all for coming to Kyle, appreciate it.
Councilmember Tipp.
I will offer up if there's areas of interest from the council. I know the staff has had to get in touch with this. So, if anybody has areas of interest that they want to communicate to the staff over to AT&amp;T and me myself, glad to take a look at it as well.
Councilmember Tobias.
Yes, real quick, during the COVID lockdown, there was, you know, a lot of people working from home. And I remember receiving an email last year about, you know, when we're gonna get more providers, service providers. Now it looks like we're gonna be competing with possibly another one. So this is four, I believe. So that's great news, and hopefully there'll be some competitive rates for residents to start looking into your services. And it's good on my end because when you're spinning on your phone and your computer during fantasy football, you ain't got no connection. You know, it's gonna really help to be able to know that we have other providers out there that could be able to help with this, so thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Ellison.
Thank you, Mayor. So a couple of questions. First question, what part of the city do you all plan on starting? And do you already have a, a total layout in which ways you all would be going?
We do have assets in place already, existing assets that are serving wireless assets. So, I will say, generally speaking, the east side of 35, perhaps hometown Kyle and everything in that general area. And we do have a layout. Kind of the strategy that we want to go forward with? Rather discuss that with the city and the council, maybe offline? I don't, I mean, I could discuss it now, but-
No, I mean, certainly.
Not sure I want to reveal the total strategy in a public forum if that's an appropriate answer.
It's a very, it's a very competitive business, so, so we do get a little bit weary about getting too, too specific in a public forum, but if you'd like-
That's all right, I'm still gonna ask the questions. I appreciate it. So if you all could share that with the city, so at least we have that internally. That I completely understand for proprietary reasons, I, I understand that, I get that. Second thing, so as Councilmember Tobias mentioned earlier, we've had two additional service providers come in within the last handful of months this year. So this would be the fourth because we already had one. So I'll ask you the same question I asked the others before because for a long time, I've lived in the city for a dozen years. We've had a lot of folks that have misunderstood that there's, was an exclusivity agreement between why there wasn't additional internet providers for additional service and options. So I'll ask you all the same question. What took you to this point, or how long to get to this point, for coming to Kyle?
Well, I mean, it was, look, it was financial analysis driven by lack of competition in the area. That's, that's basically what it revolved around.
The, the majority of Hayes County is, is outside AT&amp;T's historical service footprint. So that's why, other than, other than wireless, we have not had much of a presence here up until now. But, you know, we can, we can see the growth that's gone on here. We can see the job that, that the county and the City of Kyle has done to bring, you know, not just growth, but, but to bring in the right kind of growth. Costco, the Warren Company, all these things are going on here. We see this. And it's, you know, even, you know, outside our footprint or not, you know, it was just, you know, it was, it's like, hey, we need to be here. So that, that's really what brought us here. I'm sorry, let me say all that again.
No, you actually, you actually spoke a lot enough that the mic picked it up, so I, I appreciate that. Certainly, that was the answer I was expecting as well. Just the point is being that there was nothing the city was preventing from internet providers coming here. It was a business decision that needed to be made on top of growth and all these other aspects and variables that needed to check you all's boxes to make you come here. Totally get it. That's the point I was trying to make. Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for the time.
All right, next up, City Managers' Report.
All right, Mayor, Council, Scott Sellers, for the record. Wait for that report to come up on screen. All right, the first item is just a, an update that the city did receive an award for La Verde Park for the design of the project from the American Society Landscape Architects. And they did produce a little booklet, and a couple of councilmembers and staff went to an awards ceremony in San Antonio. So this is the booklet, all handness across the dais, but you can see we're prominently featured in the book. So, congratulations. I don't know if anyone who attended wants to say anything.
Unfortunately, I wasn't able to make it due to emergency in my, the company I work for.
Councilmember Ellison, anything?
Oh, I'm sorry, were you, you asking me on the La Verde project?
Yes, sir.
Oh, sorry. No, certainly excited that we were able to win that award. It was an honor to be there and amongst other many great projects from all over the state and other, even outside the state. And so to have a project here in Kyle that we were such a huge part of in designing, thanks to our teammates at Monmark and Lionheart. And so it's really exciting to be recognized for our design. Hopefully, maybe we'll come back and get one for the actual construction as well.
Awesome, thank you. Okay.
Councilmember Floris Kill.
Thank you. I just have a question because I read about that in an email. So my question is, how do we get chosen? Do we have to submit something to?
There was a competitive application that Lionheart submitted on behalf of the city.
Okay, so it's, it's an award for the engineering?
For the design.
Okay. And then I see everybody who went, is there a reason why Mariano didn't go?
I think she was available.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because, or Jerry? I guess I'm confused as to, did, I don't know how this works out. So was there an invite for everybody?
Yeah, I believe so, very much, it's in public.
Okay.
Cause of working.
Okay, so, and Parks just didn't want to go?
I'm not sure.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Thank you.
All right, next up is Nitro Swim. The groundbreaking ceremony is going to be- Well, I'm just gonna talk about it. Groundbreaking ceremony- Groundbreaking ceremony is May 10th at 11:00 AM up on site. So this is up in Plum Creek. And everyone is invited. So a lot of work to bring Nitro and we're very, very excited for them to have chosen Kyle as home. We then, next item is the budget work session, which is May 12th. It starts at 5:30 PM. So dinner will be provided. This is a public meeting that will be held here in this room and will be broadcast. And then finally, City Council Workshop. This is the TERZ training, which will be held May 16th. And you can see that's at 7:00 PM also in this room and will be broadcast as well. So please make sure all those events are on your calendar. Next up, we have Amber to talk about the downtown master plan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Amber Lewis, Assistant City Manager for the record. We are continuing down our path to creating the downtown master plan. The survey is still available for you to participate in through May, so I encourage you to do that. We recently wrapped up the community events, public engagement component of the plan. And then starting in June, the architects will begin to develop the plan, which will include the feedback that was garnered during this public engagement process. Thank you.
Okay. And then Samantha.
Councilor Floris Kael.
I guess, I just, my only question is, are we going to do anything with the 2019 downtown master plan?
Do you mean incorporate it?
Yes.
I'm sure they will be referencing it, but I, I, I think it's supposed to be imagined as what, you know, 2022 wants for downtown. I think new, new firm, new ideas, new people, new feedback, right?
Yeah. My hope is definitely that whatever we do, that we move forward on ASAP because I would like to see some major changes down here to, to get people to, bring them to the downtown. And so I just want to make sure that we're not, we're not losing sight of previous assessments that we've made. I just want to make sure that we incorporate them since they were paid for and they're less than like three years old. Because I think it was December of 2019, so essentially early 2020.
I know that the chamber was really involved in some of the, those talks back then. And I know that we've shared all of that information with the firm and that will be incorporated as well.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet.
Samantha Armbruster, I'm just here to give an update that the translation button on our website is now live. So across every page, if you go to cityofkyle.com, there is now a button that says en español and does translate all of pages into Spanish. At the bottom of the page, there is another translation option that has eight different languages available as well.
All right. Now Chief Barnett.
Did we lose our screen? Screen share. There we go. All right.
Thank you, Mayor and Council Jeff Barnett, Chief Police. Texas law enforcement has a longstanding history of supporting the Texas Special Olympics. And with that, I'm pleased to announce that the Hayes County Law Enforcement Torch Run will take place this Friday. May the 6th, we will begin at 7:00 AM at the Kyle Police Department out front. We will meet and gather. We'll have a few words before we begin the run. It starts promptly at 7:30 AM. It will travel southward to the San Marcos Fire Department Station Number Five, which is in the northern part of San Marcos. This torch run is specifically sponsored by all of the law enforcement agencies here in Hayes County and specifically including the Kyle Police Department, the San Marcos Police Department, all of the county entities. And I need to highlight the Texas Department of Public Safety because they are heavily involved in this event as well. And this is all in support of the ceremonies for the Texas Special Olympics that will take place May the 13th in San Antonio at the Toyota Field. Thank you.
Chief, it's a quick question. Could you explain the run a little bit on what is the route for each participant? Do they run from Kyle to San Marcos?
They will. This is about a six mile run for those of you who are interested in running and it is designed for those who run. It's not particularly a walk. Slow, slow joggers may get left behind as well. So if you're a pretty good sprinter or you think you can accomplish a six mile run at a pretty good pace, the reason being for that is that there's an ending ceremony in San Marcos and obviously they have a time schedule to keep. So what we've planned to do, when we leave the Kyle Police Department, we'll travel southward and cross Center Street. We will cross the railroad tracks and enter Old Highway 81 near the Pasi's Restaurant. And then they will continue on 81 to where they meet the I-35 access road. They will stay on the I-35 access road all the way to the San Marcos Fire Department Station Number Five. They'll be escorted by numerous law enforcement vehicles to keep everybody safe. For those who might want to join us for the opening ceremony type, our portion of the event, you're welcome to join us in front of the police department. And we're going to have a stopping point for those who don't really have the time or, or desire to run six miles that morning. It's going to be somewhere around the three quarter to one mile mark. It'll be before you get on the access road. There will be a place that you can stop and turn around and, and make your way back to the police department, to your vehicles or workstation, whatever you want to do. So it's, it's actually open to everyone. Those who continue beyond that point, obviously are going to run about six miles and we need them to be there before 8:30. So you've got less than an hour to, to make that clip.
Thank you for that one mile or I'm not as young as I used to be. So thank you very much for that one.
Yes, sir. You bet.
All right. Mariana Espinosa.
Mariana Espinosa, Parks Recreation Director. This week we have a couple of photo opportunities down at Mary Kyle Hartson Park. For tomorrow, we have a May the 4th backdrop. It's up at the gazebo. And then tomorrow at 6:30 PM, we will take a May the 4th photo with a group, if anyone comes out in their costumes. And then we also have the decoration up for the following day for the Cinco de Mayo and that will be up through the week. This weekend, we're looking for volunteers for the invasive plant removal event. Invasive plant removal will take place along the Plum Creek Trail. So volunteers that are interested would be from nine to one and we'll be meeting kind of in the middle of the Plum Creek Trail. And then we are still seeking vendors for market days and Juneteenth. The first market day of the season is June 11th and is also our first Juneteenth celebration. That's it.
That concludes the report.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next up, CIP Road Projects and Consent Agenda Presentation. Mr. Barbara.
Good evening, Mayor and Council Leon Barba, City Engineer. Heroes Memorial Park, we're about 78% complete. They're finishing the landscaping and the hardscaping of the Cascade Wall and the bridge is complete. And we're expecting to open this project up in July. La Verde Park, we're at about 47% complete. They're installing playground equipment, water feature equipment, and they're forming and installing rebar at the Vivian Foundation. And we're expecting the completion date on this one to late 2022. Public Safety Center, this project's about 22% complete. As I mentioned before, they're doing this project in four phases. Phase one, they're working on metalwork and electrical rough end. On phase two, they're doing some plumbing rough end and some metal framing. And they're also doing, working on the high steel, high roof steel erection part of it. Phase three, they're installing exterior framing. And phase four, they're working on the decking. I just want to let you know the upcoming activity will be when they top out on that project. We don't have a date yet for that. South Side Wastewater Improvements, based on our pay estimates, we're about 94% complete. We're tying Edwards Drive into the main line. They installed a PEC transformer and provide access to the lift station for PEC. Lift station is pretty well completed. We even did some work on the adjacent lots where we got some of our easements from. On the expansion plant, we're almost there. We're at 96% complete on the plant. The Dewatering Facility is about 14% complete. Continuing to work on Saturdays to try to stay on schedule. We expect to have that online plant at the end of this month. Dewatering Facility will be complete in August of 2022. And that's some of the work that's going on right now. More good news, Button Creek Interceptor Phase Two, all the pipe is in the ground. We're just working on a little bit of manhole coating and we have one head ball to reconstruct. We completed our testing. We're waiting for as built from the contractor. We have a walkthrough planned for tomorrow. Do want to let you know that there's still one more phase to this project. We have two lift stations that we need to decommission. One is in South Lake and the other one is at Button Creek Village. And that's going to be a, a good surprise for the Public Works Department to get rid of those two lift stations. Old Post Road, the Hayes County crews have started at the north end at FM 150. They're working their way back towards the rest of the section that's been completed already. The Branch Interceptor, we're about 64% complete. We have several roads that are closed to through traffic. It's pretty rough out there. Went out there today and it's, it's a little bit rough, but they got Third Street closed from Scott to Sledge. They have Sledge Street from Jay Mars to Second Street and Gross Street from Second to Third Street. They're open to through, not to through traffic, but to the public citizens that live there. The wastewater line on Old Highway 81 is complete and we're expecting to complete this project completely in fall of 2022. On the consent agenda items, number eight is a task order to LGE Engineering for some geotechnical work that we need done. We're going to do about three bores in there to see what kind of soils we have. Since the last time we did that project in that area, we ran into some really hard rocks. So we're trying to make sure we can identify that before we get started. Change order number nine is of course the work that we did for the Edwards Drive businesses there, where we want to tie them into that eight inch wastewater line that's behind their properties. So that line is in and done. Number 10 is we're authorizing BRZ coatings to start working on Plum Creek Elevated Storage. And we have all the required pre-work from them in our files. So we're ready to go on that project. And that concludes my presentation. I did want to mention one thing. I don't know if you got calls or complaints about the northbound Frontage Road and I-35 being closed last Tuesday, I believe. I found that out the hard way. I did talk to Willie Samora. He's the area engineer for Tech dot. He said they plan to have it open by Friday.
All right. Anybody have any questions for?
Just real quickly on, that's what I was going to ask was on that road. I've gotten it from my family members as well, so it's coming from all sides. But yeah, thank you for that update and, and thank you for working on that so diligently. And thank you for the great detailed report. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? All right. Next up is the consent agenda. We need to pull item 16 to postpone to later. Is there any other items that council wants to pull? Councilmember Parsley. Councilor Ellison.
I was going to pull 13 as well.
Anyone else? Councilmember Floris Kael.
Thank you. 12, 20, and 21.
Anyone else? All right. Yep. All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda items eight, nine, 11, 14, 15, 17, 18, 19. And that is all. Moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Floris Kael. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, agenda item 10, authorize award and execution of purchase order to BRZ coatings in amount not to exceed 275,000, which includes 10% contingency to perform all work required for the rehabilitation of Plum Creek Elevated Storage Tank. This is Mr. Barba's item. Councilmember Parsley.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a couple of questions. How often do we perform preventive maintenance on these tanks? If, if we, if we do any?
Councilmember, it's been quite a while since that tank has had any maintenance on it. Several years ago, I say, actually, when I got here in 2013, one of the first tanks that we were working on was at Veterans Drive at Center Street. That was one of the first tanks that we had worked on. Council at that point in time decided we need to do some major maintenance on our water tanks. So one by one, every year we've taken one of our tanks down and rehabbed it and recoded the tank. So this is on our list of tanks that we've had to repair. So we, I don't know how long it's go expense and that tanks had any work done to it. Public Works may know the answer to that, but I do know that we do have a process in place to upgrade these tanks and recode them, rehabilitate them to meet the new standards the TCEQ puts out. So the next tank we're going to work on is going to be Lehman. That's going to be the next tank. So we have a list of projects and we're near the end of those projects.
So about how often do we have to rehabilitate a tank?
It's hard to say. We, we do it, if I may be incorrect on this, but I think Public Works does a study every year on those tanks. They have somebody test those tanks, look at those tanks and do testing on them and inspections on those tanks.
Okay.
And depending on how serious they are, then it may just be able to wait for a little while. But we do have a budget set aside every year to work on those tanks. And when we do find problems, we do act quickly as, as we can. This one got delayed because of the equipment that Verizon had on there. We'd have liked to have done this maybe a year or so ago, but we got delayed because of the equipment that needs to come off there so that we can do the actual work on the tank.
And so what are the damage areas? What is the most, the critical points?
Mainly it's rust. You have delamination inside the tank sometimes, but typically it's usually rust. The tank starts eroding away and you, just like a house, you need to keep painting those and touching them up as you go through. It's a major cost right now. Actually, our costs are going down. We're not paying as much for these tanks. When the first, some of the first tanks we did were major in need of repair. So the costs have been coming down over the years. So we don't anticipate a lot of work to be done on the next tanks because we did put them in priority orders to which ones are worst tanks. So we're getting near the end of our cycle in those. I don't know if I've answered your question.
Yeah, kind of. I would just wanted to know what's the code life expectancy and see how often can we go ahead and inspect the tanks before it gets to the point that we have to do the whole rehabilitation and then pay $275,000 for that? So I don't know if, if there is a way that we can establish this preventive measures, go every six months and see if we can recode before you guys rust it again to get to this point.
These coatings that we're putting on are very expensive and we expect them to last 10 to 15 years or longer.
Okay. So we shouldn't be.
But we still need to inspect them on a routine basis.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I would like to make a motion to approve item 10, please.
Second. Moved by Councilmember Parsley, seconded by Mayor Protem Rizzo. The approved agenda item 10 is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, agenda item 12, approve a lease agreement between CapCOG and the city of Kyle for an air quality monitoring station to be placed at Lake Kyle. This is Kathy Roker, Councilmember Floris Kael.
Hi, Mayor. Mayor Protem, Councilmembers Kathy Roker for the record.
I was pretty excited reading all this. And so I pulled it because I want to get, I just want you to, to be able to explain to everybody what it is and, and what's going to go on over there.
CapCOG, the Clean Air Coalition, has multiple air quality monitoring stations throughout the CapCOG region, which Williamson, all the way down to Hayes out. It's a, it's a fairly large region. They don't have as many stations as they would like. And they were specifically wanting something in between Austin and there is one in San Marcos. So really Kyle Buta was an ideal location. So they were looking at us, those two cities. And so we set aside time and CapCOG group came down and met with me and I showed them the locations that I thought would meet their perimeters. And then they went and they met with Buta and after looking at the different sites, they picked Kyle. So it was a win on our part and they, Buta really wanted it. So I kind of felt good that we got it.
I do have a question. I see in there, they discuss the 40 amp electricity hookup.
Yes.
And I was wondering, because I would really like to see some outlets in that park. So is there an outlet out there or how are they going to, to use that?
There is a pole out there right now that's close to Lehman Road and that was one of the determining factors. And ideally the, the station, I would like to see it eventually kind of move a little bit further to the fence line. But because of the dam construction, you know, we couldn't put it over there in that area. So there is a utility pole that's already out there. We did meet with a staff electrician out on site. And, you know, he stated that it wouldn't be any problem whatsoever running a 40 amp service from that pole and using that pole for the service. Again, I'm, I don't know a lot about electricity, other than the fact that I'm afraid of it for the most part.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda item 12, please.
Second. Moved by Councilmember Floris Kael, seconded by Mayor Protem Rizzo. The approved agenda item 12, is there discussion on the motion, Mayor Protem?
Yes, Mayor. Kathy, yeah, thank, thank you for all the work you've done with this. And this actually first came forward when a resident reached out to me. Dr. Michelle Cohen reached out to me one day and asked, what was our air quality study? The last one the city of Kyle had done. And when I reached out to staff, found out we had never had one done. So my next phone call was to the CapCOG Clean Air Coalition staff and they started. So my next phone call was to the CapCog Clean Air Coalition staff, and they started going over, you know, the procedure for doing a clean air study. And then they talked about putting in a monitoring station. So this is where the original talks were started. And yes, Buta really wanted it really bad. I served with the Mayor Protem from Buta there on the CapCog, and they're really pushing for it as well. But thank you for you and your team for really bringing all the logistics and all the information they needed to see it come here. And I'm looking forward to the study as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. All right, next up, agenda item number 13, approve a professional services agreement buying between the Boring Company and the city of Kyle. I think multiple people wanted requests, so Mr. Sellers, if you want to just present on it?
Sure. Mayor Council, Scott Sellers for the record. So the item in front of you tonight is to approve a professional services agreement with the Boring Company. In the proposal that the council received a month ago when the Boring Company was selected to be the firm to move forward with a design-build contract, the exhibit outlines several items that are contained within this professional services agreement and then what the scope of work is going to be for the project. So this is really the first agreement with the Boring Company. And then following this agreement will be the design-build agreement. So there's multiple steps. Now, I want to talk a little bit about the Vibe. I know there's been some discussion about this already tonight and also some inquiries from the community. So this is not a project that has just occurred overnight. This is something that has been worked on for several years with the developer of the Kyle Crossing development. The project took on the form of what we call TOD, which is Trail Oriented Development, meaning the entire project for the vertical mixed-use facilities, as well as the restaurant and the central square is being built to really accentuate the citizen trail system that is being designed right now by Schaumburg and Polk. The Vibe Trail Network is roughly 80 miles and is designed to bring residents from every neighborhood in the city into our commercial areas, our public areas, our parks, et cetera. So everyone in the city of Kyle will have access to this large trail network and to the associated amenities. One of the reasons for the tunnel, we did look at this first for a bridge. In fact, our first inquiry was to Tech Dot for a sidewalk on the 1626 overpass. And unfortunately, Tech Dot denied our request, said that was not a safe crossing for pedestrians. So we then began looking at it with our engineer firm, whether or not we could do a, an overpass, a pedestrian overpass over the railroad, similar to what other cities have done over the railroad or major roadways. In this case, there are multiple electrical lines, poles, and a very high voltage, I believe it's 138 KV high voltage electrical line, directly adjacent to the railroad tracks, which made building a bridge infeasible for this area. We then considered other options. Going around to the nearest Atgre crossing would add miles to the Vibe Trail through here. Also, we've heard for quite some time, the residents on Cromwell looking for a safe crossing of the railroad to get to the commercial areas. Many of those residents are limited in their mode of transportation. So a tunnel was discussed, entertained, and then we went out to RFP to see if there was interest from tunneling companies, at which point, again, we brought back the Boring Company proposal to the council. There was a question about working with Union Pacific. We have made Union Pacific aware of this. We did not want to leave them out of the planning of this project. The professional services agreement does start the actual permitting with Union Pacific, although we have had preliminary discussions with them. And there is some concern, as a railroad should always have concern about anyone within their right of way and what a tunnel project might look like and how it could disturb the tracks. And as part of the geotech, again, part of the work that is in this professional services agreement, geotech will be performed, telemetry will be installed on the tracks themselves, and a proposal will be presented to Union Pacific, which will hopefully satisfy them that their tracks will not be disturbed. As was mentioned earlier in the public comment, this section is in what's called the Austin chalk, which is a great substrate and great for tunneling. And we believe there will be minimal or no disruption at all to the surface development. The funding for this project comes out of a development agreement with the developer. It's a $3 million set aside, again, a private development dollars. So no taxpayer dollars are anticipated to be expended on this tunnel project. The developer is planning to front the $50,000 for the professional services agreement. At the next council meeting, we will also have a reimbursement agreement with Union Pacific Railroad, and that dollar amount will be $75,000, which is a drawdown account that Union Pacific requires for all projects. We have that same account with our rail siding relocation project. So that will also be prefunded from that $3 million. And then finally, the tunnel itself, as we have discussed in the past, will be 12-foot in diameter. Where the path goes through will be 10 feet. The tunnel will be very well lit and we plan to have cameras in there for safety also. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. And also, we do have representatives here from the Boring Company.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sellers. Does anybody have any questions they want to ask? Councilmember Parsley.
You just answered my two questions. One was who's paying for the $50,000? Second, safety, because I was concerned having a tunnel, a tunnel, all kinds of stuff can happen in there. I don't know. So just who's going to be monitoring those cameras, though? Will it be the city? Is it going to be the police department? Like, who's going to be taking care of that?
We haven't had that conversation, but most likely, as with our other projects that we're working on right now, where we're installing cameras in our park system, that will come back to a central feed, which we monitor by dispatch.
Okay. And so I do, I know there are residents that have concerns, and this is just going to be to bring up the design, correct? And the studies that are going to be done, obviously, to see, you know, what we're going to find in there, what, if it's going to be something doable.
Correct.
The next question I had, are we allow, are we gonna, since it's in the Vibe Trail, are golf carts going to be allowed in there? Because I don't know how that's going to fit with residents walking.
The Vibe Trail is...
Since it's smaller, you know, it's a 10...
Yeah, it's 10 instead of 12. You know, we did 12 for safety also, you know, in case carts would drive off the side or people would, you know, be off the side of the path. Typical golf cart is three and a half to four feet max. So there is still plenty of room, even if two golf carts are in there. We do plan to stripe the centerline of the Vibe through the tunnel also, just to help delineate, you know, the path east and west. So definitely, safety is a primary concern.
Those were my two questions. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Councilmember Floris Kell.
Thank you. So where is this $3 million from? Is it like in an account?
The $3 million from the developer will be from a bond issue that the developer has for the project. However, they have agreed to front money for the preliminary agreement as well as the reimbursement agreement, which will be recouped when the bond is issued.
Who's going to, who pays for that bond?
That's the developer.
The developer?
It's part of their construction.
Okay, so how long will it take if everything goes well and they say, yes, we're going to build it? How long will it take to build that tunnel?
I believe the machine is a very quick mover, so the goal is to do it within a couple of months of actual construction.
Okay, well, if it gets built in a couple of months, where will it lead?
So the parameters of the trail are from that Kyle Crossing development, which is on the southwest corner of Marketplace and 1626. And then the terminus will be at the round, not the round, the cul-de-sac in Plum Creek at the very, I guess, eastern edge of Cromwell Drive.
Okay, so how will that benefit High Road?
High Road?
Or 150 East?
It won't.
So there's no benefit to the major, any of my residents, really? Okay, so then it says there was supposed to be some funding from the county. What is the status on that?
I'm not sure the question...
No, okay, so, okay. I think I just have maybe one more question. Nope, I think that's it. All right, thank you.
All right. I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Mayor.
Sorry.
There's a motion.
There's a motion on the floor. It's our second. It's moved by the mayor, seconded by councilmember Bradshaw, that we approve agenda item number 13. Is there discussion on the motion? Councilmember Tobias.
Okay. Yes, I've got, I've got some as well. So right off the bat, Mr. Sellers, you're saying that the complete funding, the $50,000, is going to come straight from the developer, not from the city?
We don't have the money in hand yet, but that is the agreement.
Okay. And in a couple of weeks or months when this thing's going to be built, we're not going to have any change orders to where we have to take up any of that cost?
So this preliminary agreement will, will provide a cost. Right now, we're not sure what the total cost is, but we have what's called an engineer opinion of probable cost of roughly $2 million, 2.1 million, somewhere in there. So this, this first preliminary agreement will allow Boring Company to go in and see, you know, if there's anything that's abnormal, you know, in the subsurface. And then they'll come back with a design-build agreement.
Okay. A couple more, Mayor. Issues that I've coming up with is, as you can tell, it's pretty flat land, it's by a train track. So number one, safety concerns are flooding. If there's an event that this place, this floods out and there's people going in and out and it starts raining, what's the safety measures on that? Because again, it's an underground tunnel underneath the track. And the other thing was the safety concerns above the track. How pedestrians sometimes eventually crawl up spaces and try to go over the tunnel and so forth. And I think what maybe Ms. Floris Kell was trying to get at is the benefit for, again, people from the east of Kyle. From what I've had a long discussion with the resident, again, is this is benefiting a specific part of town once again. That's what they're looking at. You're developing, you're getting to the people of Plum Creek, the people of the uptown area, the people in the hometown. And again, the people from east of Kyle, again, are beginning to feel left out when we're doing these projects. And so I'm just being the voice of the residents that I deal with on this end. So, but as far as me, the concerns I have is the safety concerns is people eventually find a way to get out from the tunnel. And I could just see a serious incident to where somebody's trying to cross the track from above, especially if we have a lot of large crowds going back and forth. And of course, the flooding. And again, the finances, yes, it looks like the developer's going to pay their share upfront, but I just have a feeling that there's going to be something later on that the city's going to have to come up with on this. So that's where I stand on it. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Allison.
Thank you, Mayor. Certainly, I appreciate the history and getting to the point. I think that, Mr. Sellers, you answered a lot of the questions that I've seen. Mr. Pillipant, that came up earlier and spoke at the 5:00, the 5:30 meeting, I think you addressed, I'm looking through his questions for the most part, I think you addressed the questions that were relative to the tunnel and this agenda item. Just reviewing to make sure I didn't miss anything. So I think the key part here is certainly that the tunnel is being funded by the development and even this preliminary study. You know, I would, I know you answered that it doesn't benefit the east side. Full disclosure, I've lived on the east side the entire time. I've lived in Kyle and happy to always be there for the residents of not only that part of the city, but the entire city that I represent. And I would say that it does benefit because the idea with this whole Vibe network is to get people across our city, no matter where you are, to all kinds of different places, would have, having an automobile. And so you can get from an east subdivision in Kyle and get all the way to Hero's Memorial without having to get into a vehicle because of this tunnel. So it benefits it. And then the great thing is, the city's not paying for this. It's the developer. So I could certainly understand the argument if the city was using $3 million of taxpayer funds to build a tunnel. It still is a stretch to even, I get that. But this is a development-funded project. The reason why it's happening now, the only other question that I feel like Mr. Pillipant brought up is why now? Why the rush? Well, it's just because this development is happening now. And so they're, they're taking care of that part to that connectivity that we're trying to promote throughout our entirety of our city, which is all about equity. And this is something that, you know, I'm at an APA conference right now, and we're talking about equitable modes of transportation, getting people to different places, and being cognizant of people of all different scales within your community. And I've been talking about this project, and all of them are just blown away by it. And so I think this is a part of connecting all of it. If this was just so happened to be a railroad crossing on the east side, in order for us to get through to accomplish this connectivity that we're trying to do with this multi-use path system, I'd be all for it, even though it doesn't really directly benefit the residents of the west side of town. But I would say the same thing. It would allow them to get all the way to Lake Kyle or wherever it is that they're trying to get over there. So I think that's the, kind of the important thing to remember. Certainly, I appreciate the aspect of that there were a number of different avenues looked at, alternatives, all different types of ways, but it, you know, they just weren't feasible for one way, reason or the another. And so I really like, you know, I was talking to a resident about it, and I said, you know, I would be sad regardless of wherever this was, because any part of our city that we're not connecting this entire network together, that would be a sad thing, in my opinion, because we're not doing an equitable service to everybody by not making the connectivity. And it just so happens that this one's in the place that it is because of that railroad track. If it were on the east side, it'd be the same, the same thing and the same mindset, for me at least. So I certainly appreciate the, once again, this has been, in the works for a while now on this development. I was really glad to get this secured, this $3 million secured through the agreements and the negotiations. And for me, those are all things that make a great impact on this, this project. I'm really happy to hear the measures talked about security, because I certainly, and the residents that I've talked about, that, that is one that's been highlighted and I can certainly agree with them on that. And so with these efforts in place and these processes that we'll have in place when the tunnel was built, I think will be great. And certainly, you know, people are going to maybe do some nefarious things, but right now, they just, they're crossing over the railroad right now, and it's dangerous. And so that's, that's not the good thing. So I can't imagine that when you put a safer crossing, that people are going to continue to use the dangerous route that is already existing right now. But I certainly appreciate the explanation and the time on this. And I think that, you know, it certainly is an innovative project, and I'm really thrilled that the developer's paying for it.
Any other discussion? Mayor Protem.
Yeah, just really quick, Scott. Going over the Vibe Trail, right now, our trail system starts off at Water Leaf Park and goes all the way to Lake Kyle. Right now, our trail system starts off at Water Leaf Park and goes all the way to Lake Kyle, goes down to Steeplechase Park. From Steeplechase Park, there's plans in the work to connect that to the project that'll be happening off of Bun Creek, not Bun Creek, uh, what is the road right there? Uh, the Barton Project, what is that? Uh, street right there?
Market Place or Burleson?
Burleson, sorry, Burleson. So, it's gonna connect that to Burleson. From Burleson, we'll go to this trail, correct? And then to Hero's Memorial. So, in essence, you'll be able to go from Water Leaf Park all the way to the Hero's Memorial Park, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and for me, it was, uh, when they, when we brought forward the project on Burleson, I was a little worried about people in Steeplechase being left out of that, and having that connectivity from Steeplechase to Burleson is something, the reason why I, I'm, I'm in favor now of that sports facility there that's coming out, the outdoor sports, workout specifically. So, it's something that I'm looking forward, but yeah, connectivity is important and getting people off the roadway, so thank you.
And I'll just add, the, you know, the city's already begun the design of the trail from Cool Springs down to Water Leaf and then to basically the interstate. So, there's two million dollars of, of city money for that project, and then two million dollars of county money for that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Floris Cale?
Thank you. This will be my last question. So, there's three million dollars set aside. In the event, well, first of all, do we have, do we have an estimate on how much that's gonna cost?
So, the, the preliminary estimates, right around two point one million for the, the tunnel.
And, and have they done any kind of digging or any research?
That's this fifty thousand dollar agreement.
So, is there a situation where this could happen to cost four million?
Yeah, definitely.
So, if it, if it costs four million, is that, and I, I know it'll come back for a vote, but, but then we're kind of a little bit more obligated at that point. So, yeah, I guess just, that's my question is, without having, you know, a defined amount, it makes me nervous to say yes, but so ultimately, what we're just voting on is a fifty thousand.
Correct.
And then it'll come back if there is, because I think you said there's gonna be another agreement?
The, the next council meeting will be in agreement with Union Pacific Railroad for a reimbursement agreement for this project.
Okay. Okay, so we do have another opportunity to vote, know if it's more than the three million dollars, like, will we have an opportunity to?
We'll bring back a, a design-build contract, and that will have, what we hope to have, which is a guaranteed maximum price, which then the contractor would be obligated to stay at or under that, that dollar amount. And if that is over three million dollars, the council can, can halt the project.
I totally understand that, but I think we kind of get in over our heads sometimes, like with the Hero's Memorial, that did not start off as an eight or nine million dollar project, and then the deeper we go into it, the more we're committed, and then the more we end up spending. And so, that's always a concern for me. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just one last thing. If we can make sure that when, during the design prod, project where they can make sure that they design it to where pedestrians are not going over the track and so forth, on, over the tunnel, on that end.
Yeah, currently, there's a, a fence.
Okay.
But it's a, it's a rock fence, because in between where the tunnel entry would be and the actual right-of-way for the tracks is a large detention pond. So, there's already a fence for the detention pond. The railroad through the permitting process will ensure that that area is secured. But I also want to hit the earlier comment you made about, you know, storm events. You know, we hope people don't go into any crossing, you know, underground crossing, because we'll have multiple areas of the vibe that are culvert crossings as well. You know, we just hope people have common sense, but even with that, a tunnel that's nine hundred linear feet will have a sump in it. And so, you know, the water will collect to one central area and be pumped out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries six to one. All right. I know we have two more on the consent agenda, but because we've gotten through that one, I'd like to request a ten-minute break, and we will pick up the meeting at eight forty-five. Meeting back to order. The next up is agenda item number twenty, approval of an interlocal agreement between the city of Kyle, a home rule municipality located in Hayes County, Texas, and Crosswinds Municipal Utility District. This item is Mr. Erps. I believe Councilmember Floris Cale requested it.
Thank you very much. All right. Are you ready?
What number is it?
It's number twenty.
Okay.
All right, this is an interlocal agreement. Could you, I, I have a really hard time trying to understand all this stuff, and so, I know it's a mud. And it says they're, they're building or they're gonna build. Is that correct?
So far, so good.
Okay, well, that's all I wanted to know, because I don't want to, I'm not in favor of, of voting for that, so I had to pull it in order to make that choice. But if there's anything that you'd like to talk about as far as the benefits of having a mud, I'm gonna blind list?
Let me clarify the item then.
Okay.
This is a mud that's already in existence.
There you go.
They're already approved. They already have homes being built. They already have infrastructure in the ground. That, what they came to us with is a problem that they're experiencing, which is they do not have an enforcement mechanism to cause the home builders to abide by the stormwater erosion controls. They're, they're not doing the erosion controls properly. They're dragging mud onto the road. And the mud does not have powers given to it to enforce on these builders. They effectively, the, the county, I, I don't know, and Kathy is probably already gone, I assume.
Nope, there she is.
Kathy, does the, does the county have an MS four that applies to them, or is it just, okay. So, the county does have an MS four that applies to them, but I believe, uh, MS four, sorry, is, is a municipal storm sewer, yeah, system, right? So, it, it's, it's designed for water quality, and, and we are compelled to have one by, by state and federal law now. So, whenever Crosswinds was getting its approvals, I believe it adopted our MS four requirements, which are more stringent than the county's. And now, they have a problem enforcing what's going on. So, what they, they, their board approached us via the attorneys. So, the attorney reached out and said, hey, can the city help us enforce this? What we would like is if our home builders are not compliant, and we have fined them, and they have refused to comply or pay the fine, for the city to withhold the water meters, because they are our water customers, to withhold the water meters until that builder comes into compliance. That's what this agreement does.
Do we normally do that, get involved like that?
Well, we haven't had this problem before. So, the answer is no, we haven't normally done that. We have established some, somewhat of a precedent of trying to work like what we're doing with Monarch, about Monarch sharing their utility information with us for whenever we have non-payment of sewer, right? So, there is a precedent of different districts and what, working together. This is the first time someone's approached this with a problem of erosion control and sedimentation control.
Now, if we agree to work together on this kind of issue, could that cause issues down the road with other developers asking us to do the same?
Any developer, I think, that is outside of the city limits, inside the city limits, we have control, and it's not a problem. But outside the city limits, it's very plausible that they could experience similar concerns and, and come to us and ask for us to, to help. The, the good thing about this particular agreement is the burden of fining the builder, of collecting the fines, of maintaining who's, who's on the naughty list and who's not, all falls with the mud and the mud board and their staff. And they simply just communicate with us, hey, this home builder is not in compliance. Please hold, you know, the, the water meter sets until we give you the all-clear. So, it shouldn't cause too much of an administrative burden on us to help, but it certainly is something that benefits us, because the runoff and the things that are happening that aren't good or in compliance affects our Plum Creek and our drainage basins, so.
Okay, and out of curiosity, when this mud was created, did it give us, the city, any financial?
Crosswinds, um, I want to say that there was some sort of a contribution, but I, I haven't read that. I mean, that was five-plus years ago, so it's been a while. I don't remember specifically. I do know that there's a lot of give and take. Generally speaking, we, one of the things that Crosswind did do is allowed us to put a G B R A take point inside their development, which is the nor, the furthest north part of our city that you can get to. The G B R A transmission line for water runs through the east side of Kyle. And we had a take point at Yarrington and a take point at Lehman, but we did not have anything up north, and Crosswinds allowed us to do that. As far as dollar contributions, I don't specifically remember. Yeah, I just don't know the numbers.
Okay, and they've been pretty easy to deal with?
Yeah, generally speaking, yeah.
Okay, well, with that said, I would like to make a motion to approve agenda item twenty.
A motion by Councilmember Floris Cale, seconded by Councilmember Tobias, that we approve agenda item twenty. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, agenda item twenty-one, first reading, an ordinance of the city of Kyle, Texas, providing for withholding water taps and water meters and other reasonable enforcement actions to be taken for Crosswinds Municipal Utility District. This is Mr. Erps. Item, Councilmember Floris Cale?
I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda item twenty-one, please.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Floris Cale, seconded by Mayor Protim Rizzo, that we approve agenda item twenty-one. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, agenda item twenty-two, discussion on requirements for council to report and update the rest of council after traveling for the city on the following meeting after the trip, to include possible amendment to the rules of council. Councilmember Parsley?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I do wanna make, you know, mention that I'm very excited that we get the opportunity to travel and explore and bring ideas that we can implement to the city of Kyle. And I know that we have budgeted funds for trainings and conferences and visits. I believe the more knowledge we get, the better we will serve. However, I do know that council member Tobias mentioned last time, that not all of us, you know, have, not all of us have the flexibility to travel and go to these conferences as much as others. So, what I would like to propose is, and, and there might be two things. One of it, one of them is that all traveling comes to council prior to be done. Conferences or trainings or visits out of the county limit, where either fuel charges will be done or traveling expenses are gonna be requested. I don't know if there is a possibility for us to bring that up to, sorry, council prior we do it, say, this is where we're going, these are the council members that are gonna be visiting, we're gonna be attending, and this is what we are gonna be doing. I know we have the funds, but that will give more clarity to us and to everybody else that is watching the meetings, and to the residents to, where are we going, what are we doing? The next one will be, and I believe this is something that you mentioned that might have been added on another meeting, and it's the, the following meeting after the traveling has happened, then there should be an agenda item placed in order to discuss that traveling. So, if it's been already set as a rule and it's not being enforced, is there any way that you, Scott, could take on to that and add that agenda item? That way, if a council member forgets to add it and tell the rest of the council what the traveling was about, then we don't have that issue.
So, we, we did take action on travel. We clarified that if council's taking more of an excursion-type trip, so if we're moving, you know, going to Grand Junction or to see an E O C or to look at trail systems or mixed-use developments, that we would, we would report back. So, that was direction that was already taken. So, it's the, the onus on that is going to be the council. But what we did clarify is if we're going to conferences, that that's not something we have to report back. Conferences generally are what councilmembers go to get training for themselves and to further themselves. So, if that's an area you wanted to, we took that action, so we brought it up here, we discussed it and took that action. So, if you want to change that, you know, we can, we can do that, I suppose, if the, if, if that's the council will.
I would say it makes sense if somebody's going to a conference and getting knowledge about something the rest of the council doesn't know, and if you can provide, you know, at least some sort of story of what did you learn, so we can all be on the same page. You're trying to instruct the rest of the council who wasn't able to go. I would like to see that.
Okay. Councilmember Floris Cale?
Thank you. So, I, going back to the original vote that we took, which was last year, and it was something that I placed on the agenda, I think what we need to do is to start enforcing that. And so, we do that by giving direction to have Scott or city manager put that item on the agenda in case there's like three or four of us going. And so, that way, not, and we're only limited to three as it is. So, I, I don't really want to see anybody up here have to use their, one of their three for that item. And then also, I think it is a good idea, I'm always welcoming to hearing of events that we can go to or conferences that we can go to. I'm still fairly new. I don't necessarily know all the conferences that are out there. And instead of saying, well, you know, you should just look more, you should figure it out, or, I think what we should be saying is, hey, Daniella's going to this economic development conference, just, Scott could do it via email. If anybody's interested or wants to go, there's, this, this is a good way for us to learn. So, I'm, I've always been a proponent of sharing the knowledge. I never want to leave a situation being the only one that knows more than everybody else. So, I don't think there's any harm in, in that area. It's not about so much making sure we know where everybody is, but more or less kind of helping each other grow and, and recognizing that there are these conferences that we could go to, because if nobody tells us, how would we know?
Councilmember Tobias?
Okay, just, just to bring up my point. Yes, I, I do have a pretty heavy workload. I don't have the flexibility that maybe some other people do, which, you know, we all have our daily lives. I, I think my point was, when I was hearing that there were trips that were being held and there was travel, and it, and if it benefited the city or something that you could bring back to council, I, I think it would have been, the, the way I looked at it, and again, this is just me, been nice to be able to be informed of it, to say, hey, during the presentation agenda item, just gonna throw this out there. Mayor Protim, you know, trip to Houston for arts conference or whatever. It could be just something as simple as that, to inform us, to say, hey, look, you know, I went to this myself, or Daniella, we went to a conference, or we went to go see a library, or we went to go see something, and I think this would be beneficial for the city, or this is what I learned. I know last year, I went to the legislative wrap-up down at the Civic Center, at the convention center, and learned everything about what the Senate bills that they passed for the year, like the open carry law, all these other things. That could have been something that I could have brought forward on my end, but I didn't. But it's just, it's just things like that, to where if you are traveling and, and it is going to, maybe could benefit the city, it'd be just nice to share it all. That's the way I look at it.
My only thoughts are that, as it currently stands, the city manager is not responsible for council member travel, and so, it is possible at this point, based on our policies, for council members to travel without informing the city manager. I don't really think it's the city manager's responsibility to police the council and make sure that updates are being put on the agenda for different council members' travel policies. So, my thought would be to say that if we want to implement more policies, we already did last year, to, to require that, say, if we go to Washington, D.C., that the council should bring back a report from that. We took action. If that doesn't happen, the responsibility for dealing with that should also be at the level of the council. So, it's a, it's a, I just don't believe that it should be the city manager who gets put in the middle of that. Obviously, right now, travel expenses, reimbursements, and those things are very hot-button issues. The, the, I don't see why you'd want to put the city manager in the middle, because those are questions and answers exclusively for the city council to deal with internally. It doesn't have anything to do with the city manager.
Well, unless you take trips with the city manager, and then, and then I think that would be.
Please, please wait to be recognized, especially if you're gonna make those kind of comments.
Yes.
Is there any more questions or comments or motions?
I just have a question. So, are, are we currently bringing to dais and to, as an agenda, all the? Um, so are, are we currently bringing to dais and to, as an agenda, all the traveling? I'm sorry, I mean, since I have been here, I have not heard any, so I just don't know if prior...
Right, no, it is, it is not, it is not currently our policy for the city council to have to request permission from the council, uh, in order to travel or to, or to notify the council of any individual's intent to travel.
Okay, maybe I didn't word my question correctly. Oh, so when, when a councilmember has been traveling, are they currently reporting where they're traveling? And a following meeting, are they coming back with an agenda item saying, this is where I went, this is where I learned, this is my feedback to, to council, or what I, what I'm bringing back to the city? Is, has it, is it happening? I'm asking a question.
The only travel that's happened was the D.C. trip, and then obviously you went to your conference. There hasn't been any since you've been elected.
So that's what I was asking, but, you know, besides, like, I went to T M L, I didn't know I had to, to bring back that.
You, you did not per the policy that we set.
Okay.
We clarified, T M L, the National League of Cities, planning conferences, those are, uh, those are, uh, opportunities that a councilmember can avail themselves to in order to, uh, sort of like career development, to learn. It's not a requirement at all under our current policy for council to bring back, any councilmember to bring back a report on whatever conference they went to. But if they go to an excursion or some, something outside of that, where it's clear that the council has an interest, the city has an interest in learning about roundabouts or whatever it is, that we have taken direction that, that, that there should be a report or a presentation given afterwards on that. So D.C. would be an example of yes.
Okay.
We should do that. Uh, or if there's some other trip that was taken to look at something, then it would be yes, because that's of general council importance.
So my next question, sorry, I'm taking the sun. In this case, when four councilmembers went to D.C., what will be the responsibility for just one person, one of the councilmembers to randomly just put it on the item, uh, put the item in the agenda, or how, how do we do that?
Yeah, I would say it's each councilmember's responsibility to follow the policy that council set. So it's on each of the individual councilmembers to request to make that, and it can, it doesn't even have to be an agenda item. It could be an update if the city manager was involved in the city manager's report. We contemplated that, where, hey, FYI, the, there were four councilmembers and myself and went with the delegation to Washington, D.C., and this is the discussion. Doesn't even have to be, uh, an agenda item. So, but the, the, you know, the reality is, somebody's gotta take it upon themselves to be accountable for, uh, the policies that the council sets, or their responsibility for it. If I was one of the four, I would say it'd be my responsibility, just like anyone else who went, should say it's their responsibility to make sure it happens.
I guess that was my question. I wanna know for future traveling, like this time, I'm bringing D.C., but I didn't discuss that with anybody else that went with me, if anyone else was gonna bring it. So I guess that was my question. Are we, I guess we will discuss next time, who is going to be bringing, whenever we go to a trip, discuss during the trip, who's gonna be bringing this for discussion.
Councilmember Floris Cale.
Oh, Councilmember Ellison, sorry, I didn't see the handle.
Councilmember Floris Cale's already, already spoken. It's, it's your, the floor's yours.
Uh, I'll, I'll just, real quick comments. Um, so I, on, uh, the visioning workshop, uh, conferences were discussed. I agree with the mayor's, uh, recollection of our previous discussion and direction. I, I do agree with, you know, every member should take it upon themselves, and you can either have that discussion or you don't have to have discussion. Everybody knows that it's on there, and certainly, uh, that's something to be done, and we just need to stay on top of that, uh, ourselves and with each other. Uh, just a reminder, though, uh, conferences were talked about at our visioning workshop. On February 14th, I sent an email to Mr. Sellers of all the conferences that I recommended. He forwarded that email on February 15th. Um, uh, the conferences, uh, that were suggested with the links as well to review them and see what they're about, and if you were interested, uh, the dates and whatnot. That same email included the Grand Junction, uh, said, uh, dates and the Washington, D.C. trip, if you're looking for it. But if you're looking for the email, it's February 15th. It says potential fat-finding excursions, opportunities, and conferences is the email, in case you missed that.
Councilmember Floris Cale.
Thank you. Um, now, I, I heard that the visioning workshop, um, there was some discussion about these trips, but I just wanna make clear that we took a vote last year. And does anybody know what that vote was for? Because that set a policy, when we took a, when we made a motion, it took a vote. So I think we don't have a good understanding, because we just simply don't know. And if my memory doesn't fail me, which it might, that motion was to have our city manager bring that back, as long as the city manager knew about it. So I do appreciate the visioning workshop talk. However, everybody knows that there can be no action taken during that time. There was none taken. So what I am referring to was the agenda item I placed on the agenda last year, whereas we took a vote, and that vote did state who was supposed to bring it back.
It said the city manager in the, in the item?
I'm about ninety, nobody really knows, but I'm about 98% sure when I made it, because the truth is, when I get, when you get up here and you're talking, I, I, you remember emotions, not so much words, but I, I can almost swear, which I, you know, don't, um, that it was the city manager's gonna bring it back, because I vividly remember someone saying, as long as the city manager knows about it.
Yeah.
And so, again, I think that direction that we voted on and we agreed on at that time was to have the city manager do it. Now, if we don't like that, we have the ability to change it, just like the policy that we currently don't have, that you're saying that we don't have to ask permission to go on these trips. Again, that's a policy, it could be changed. If, uh, Councilmember Parsley would like to change that, she can. The same way, if you don't like the city manager to be the one to put it on the agenda, then we can do that, too. But either way, it's not been done at all since, since we've taken that vote.
Other discussion. Okay, we're gonna move on. Next up, Agenda Item Number 23, discussion and update from meeting with lobbyists in Washington, D.C. Councilmember Parsley.
All right, so I'm just gonna do a really quick recap of what we did for the councilmembers that were not, um, did not go to D.C. Um, we did have meetings with the lobbyists. Um, on Thursday, April the 8th, we had a few congressional meetings. We met with the Office of Senator Corn, Cornyn and Cruz and Congressman Roy, and we also met with the Department of Transportation. We had discussions on the options that we had to try to get funding for different projects, um, what were our grant options and timelines, and we successfully submitted our RACE grant application. Um, so I'm, I'm very excited about that. I think we did it right on time, and the voting was just fantastic, so great job. Um, we also met with the American Library Association, and they had discussions about the Library of the Future. Um, what would that look like? A lot of brainstorming happened in that meeting, um, tried to get their, um, opinion and best ways to get funding, if there was any available. I don't think we were lucky there, um, from the federal standpoint, at least. Uh, I don't know if, what the next steps are gonna be for the library. Is there anybody else that would like to give any other points of what we discussed in D.C.?
Mayor Protem.
Yeah, you hit on something. Daniella was the, um, there were some dates, uh, for some possible grant funding that we weren't aware about, that were closing up on us quickly. So we were able to, uh, get with staff and, and get those applications in, to get, uh, our application in for that funding ahead of the, uh, closing date. So that was very helpful on that trip. So that was something that's probably a big plus from that trip, is getting our paperwork submitted in time. So thank you for bringing that up.
The RACE grant is what it was called, the RACE grant. Councilmember Tobias.
Okay, um, thank you all for, for, more thinking, yeah, for bringing that up. Okay, so this RACE grant application, what would be, what would that be used for? If we were to get approved for, what, what monies would be allocated for, what kind of project for the city?
So that would be for our Vibe Trail. So it's a, it, there are grants that are coming for, they're infrastructure grants that are gonna be used for projects that have significant impact in a community. Um, so I believe that we submitted our Vibe Trail project, um, for that grant, correct?
Yes, ma'am. So the RACE grant really has only a few certain projects that are even eligible or qualify for those funds, and, uh, transportation projects like the trail that offset, uh, carbon emissions, take traffic off the road, promote safety, is, is one of the available, uh, avenues for those funds. There's multiple components to the RACE grant, and this year, we have applied for the planning component, which is, you know, five million dollars, plus or minus. You know, that's, that's typically the award amount they look for. And then in a future year, once the planning aspect has been accomplished, then we can go back for what's called the mega, uh, portion of the RACE grant, and that is 20 to 30 million dollars. We would be right in that range, about $25 million for the construction of the Vibe Trail.
So would we, since we hired these, this consulting company or the, the firm that we had, so is that the plan that we have within this, that they're gonna be working on this RACE grant?
They, yes.
That could be able to provide at least the monies, 50 million for the first round, and then maybe possibly we can get qualified for 30 more million dollars?
So the first round would be 5 million for the planning, and then, uh, hopefully 25 million beyond that for the construction.
Did you, did they give us a timeline as when we're gonna be able to hear back from them? And will they come down?
Six months, yeah.
Will they come down to our city and present it, or do we have to fly back up to D.C. to get that?
Uh, we wouldn't have to fly back to receive the funds, so, you know, we can receive those here.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I bet. I'll, I'll also just add on to the comments that there was a separate appropriation called STAG that we learned about on this trip as well, and made an application to Lloyd Doggett's, uh, office, and that was for the reclaimed water system. So that's a $2 million request that we've also submitted just in time as well. So there's, you know, $7 million roughly of, of projects that we've already submitted for. There's more coming, uh, which could be either Chrissy or, uh, s- surface crossing grants through the Federal Railroad Administration, and then, as was mentioned, through the American Library Association. There's other potential sources of funding available.
Great, thank you. That's exactly the kind of information that I was looking for, you know, because we were advocating for a lobbyist last year, and it got kinda controversial. But at least now, we can kinda see a plan of action that we're having with this company that we hired, and start seeing some dates, start seeing some dollar amounts, and start, uh, tying up some of these dollars to the projects that we're possibly looking at for the city. So I appreciate everybody who went down there and advocated for the city. Thank you.
Councilmember Floris Cale.
Thank you. So, um, initially, I was very hesitant to go with a lobbyist, and, um, I will say I was pleasantly surprised by the whole experience. And, and I heard back from different residents, some of which didn't really appreciate us going to Washington, but what they don't realize is, um, the meetings with the representatives that we had in the very short period of time was essential to helping us, especially when it came to the, the grants that, um, we needed to submit in a very limited amount of time. So, um, my favorite part was the Federal Railroad Administration, and when we spoke to them, it was nice to get that automatic feedback, meaning we asked a question and they gave us an answer, all within real time. And so I know we could do that by Zoom, but just so you know, we did do a Zoom meeting, and it was not the same. It was not even a little alike. So, um, when we met with the F R A, they provided tips to help us with information, which were required, and they helped us with our grant application. Um, the people were really nice, and they were honest, and they were open, and, um, I think overall, the trip was, uh, beneficial to not just, um, us learning how, you know, Washington, D.C. works, but for the city, and trying to obtain this, uh, grants especially, um, and the reality of, of attaining grants, because some of them were like, nope, that's not gonna qualify, or, so, and that saves us time for our staff in not applying for just any old grant. So, um, the trip overall, I really appreciated and I enjoyed, um, and I would recommend anybody that hasn't gone to, to take it, with, given the opportunity.
Anyone else? All right, next up, Agenda Item 24, discussion on possible action regarding overhead lines on 150 East. Councilmember Floris Cale.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Um, I should have some backup material, if someone could, um, put that up for me?
Something agenda's got the pictures.
Okay, so I just wanna put it up, is that possible?
Take just a minute.
All right, thank you. So I'm gonna discuss the, um, overhead wires that are on 150 East, and I, I drive by there all the time, and I realize how low they are, but what I really didn't notice, um, until I got out and took some pictures, were the exposed wires that were, um, hanging. So if you look at the first picture, it's, it's, uh, these wires going through a tree, um, which, you know, obviously, they're not, um, electrical wires, but, um, they're, I can't imagine that's gonna be safe forever.
Cable and, uh...
Yes.
Internet cable, phone, or...
So and then if you go to the third one, there's one that I could literally jump rope with. Um, another concern of mine was the exposed wires, and I think that might be the last one, and that is just the wires, and not the last one.
I don't have the ability to put it up on the screen, so if someone else can do that.
Okay, great. Uh, just real quick, the second picture's the one that really has me more concerned was the, there's a leaning telephone pole with no, uh, wires tied to it at all. So that's something that really stuck out to me, the vegetation all around this area as well, uh, going into the poles and, and into the lines, but the exposed lines, the downlines, it just looks like a bunch of clutter. I mean, even the lines that are up look cluttered. It just seems like somebody went up there and just did the best they could and didn't have any experience, I hate to say it, looks really, really bad.
Well, yeah, and if you go to the second to the thir-, or the third to the last one, that's, uh, was a concern to me. Besides, I mean, it does look really awful, and, um, when I was taking these, I just got more and more frustrated and a little bit embarrassed. Um, and so I wanted to bring this to council, because I had some questions as far as the minimum required height, if the city has that, um, and how we are enforcing that with the providers.
That's a good question. What do we, what can we do as a city to enforce, uh, clean, clean this up a little bit?
So most likely, it's a pole owned by P E C and then leased out for the telecom to, uh, you know, who, whichever provider, most likely Spectrum. In the event where Spectrum then abandons to lease, you know, undergrounds, whatever, P E C typically leaves the pole, uh, or without a lot of urging from us. So we can require them to take it down. In the event of low wires, we will always, uh, once we know about them, we'll reach out to dispatch, we'll then notify the, the correct carrier, we'll typically need a pole number for that. Uh, there are, so if it's in the right-of-way, I'm really not sure if there's a minimum height requirement between, you know, the grade and then the, the wire. Clearly, anything that's, that's hanging down, uh, is, is a safety hazard. Uh, but I don't know if there's a height...
Yeah, there, there is a high requirement. There's also a high requirement between the electrical wires and the phone wires. The reason I know that's, because we've dealt with it on several properties up in Austin. So that's, that's something that's across the board, so there's something that's state-mandated that gives them high requirements.
Yeah, most likely, there's, you know, anything that's drooping, and we see that frequently, uh, is gonna be telecom. Uh, so at least, you know, you can touch it and, and be okay. You know, it's, it's not an electric fine wire, but, um, let us know which pole. Yeah, it's up on the screen, kind of.
Yes, and so, yeah, that's just, there's two of them that are completely leaning, um, and I, so I can imagine those aren't being used, but other than not looking nice, it's kind of scary.
By Four Seasons on 150?
Yes.
Okay, we'll, we'll go take a look. I think everyone knows, you know, removing poles and, and wires in our right-of-way is part of our beautification plan, is the absolute priority for us, so, uh, especially if poles not being used, we'll try to get those down, and if wires are hanging, we'll, we'll have the utility come out and lift those.
Okay, can I have an update? Can I say, like, the second meeting in June?
Uh, sure.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on. Uh, next up, Agenda Item Number 25, discussion on possible action regarding safety issues on South Old Stage, Coach Road, uh, Conestoga Drive, and Scott Street, to include discussion regarding amendments to the master transportation plan. Councilmember Floris Cale.
Thank you. Um, for this one, I will need the maps that I put in there with it, put up, please. For this one, I will need the maps that I put in there with it put up, please. So this area, I'll just go ahead and start, is over by by the library. And so there's a road, there's Scott Street, and then there is Old Stagecoach Road. And they are on opposites, and I want to say they're kind of parallel. And there's a neighborhood in between. So if you'll see, Scott goes north and south as does Old Stagecoach, and then in between, there is a road called Constoga Drive, and it connects the roads together. And it's a pretty long strip, and there are zero stop signs in that. And so Stantaga Drive is often used as a pass through to connect Scott and Old Stagecoach Road by non homeowners in that area. The length of this road, in combination with no stop signs, makes this an easy road to speed on. There's a park located in the middle of Constoga Drive, which is highly utilized by kids and families. So the problem is Scott and Old Stagecoach Road, those roads plan on being a, they're going to go from two to four lanes, which will increase the safety issues between that road. So I would like to see if we, as a city, can get in front of those safety issues and then try to find solutions to the current safety safety issues. And a few things that I thought of would maybe stop signs, or I did email staff at the last minute. I think that was about the speed hump policy. I don't know if that's still in effect. I know the city doesn't necessarily like speed humps, but when I rode out there, I've been out in that area two times, and both times, it's it's pretty dangerous. The Stagecoach Park, which is right in the middle of the development, which I think is like that in a lot of our new developments, if it's not encouraged, then it's, I'm assuming it's for, to be easy access. But what we need to think about as a city is the roads that connect to that and how we can make them safe to ensure that the kids and the families that are in those parks are able to just have a good time. Right now, those people stress a lot, and they don't necessarily like their kids to go outside and play without, of course, being right up underneath them. So so I was open and hoping that we could try to figure out some kind of plan to help this neighborhood out and to include, you know, the Scott Street and the Old Stagecoach Road, which I think both of those have tons of issues that come along with them as well.
So you're saying you really want to do a roundabout at Scott Street and Stagecoach?
Oh, man, you really don't want me reelected.
I'm just saying, if you want to solve it. Mayor Protem.
So, you know, normally, I'd probably say that unfortunately, roundabouts are made to get traffic flowing through. In this instant, that's not what we need. We actually need traffic slowed down. Scott Street and I-30, and and Stagecoach Road are now the new I-35s. People pass through there 65, 70 miles an hour, and.
Not through the roundabout, they wouldn't.
Yeah, well, I, I'll just say, I know a resident that would take the roundabout in Burleson pretty quickly, and I've seen several of them do it.
Fly right through a stop sign, too.
Yeah, but here, on this one right here, it's, it's, the concern is people turning into the subdivision, because people are speeding on the two roadways that Councilmember Flor scale has brought forward. The the concern there is when you're turning left or you're pulling out, when somebody's coming at, the posted speed limit there is 35 miles an hour, and people are doing 65 miles an hour, you you don't have a lot of chance of anything. Just down the road, a little further, my mother was rear-ended, turning left with her signal on. So this is not something that has not happened. You know, it's, 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 it's not when, it's now how often is going to happen. It's a safety concern. Even going further north on Stagecoach, there's a covert just before the new development, there's a, there's a turn there on that, near the oak tree. So, yeah, there's, there's a turn there. And what's happening there in the morning is the traffic's backing up from the stop sign off of 150, and people are coming around that turn really fast and almost rerouting people in the back. Maybe that turn as well, lowering the speed limit on that turn. I've seen a lot of turns throughout the states that have a lower speed on the turn, so maybe bringing that down to 15 miles an hour around that turn to try to keep someone from getting hurt. So I think those are two concerns that, two items that might help some of the traffic flow there on Stagecoach. But, yeah, right now, it's, it's, it's a, it's a pretty much a nightmare, and it's, it's just an accident waiting to happen before somebody gets really hurt. So I want to thank Councilmember Kell for bringing this forward.
Councilor Tobias.
Okay. I think we're looking at so much traffic flow, but traffic control, that's what we're looking at. All right, so maybe Leon can be able to help us with this here if we're talking about Constoga Drive, doing to see where two stop signs could be utilized. Maybe not so much Lorraine Drive, but when you hit to Six Shoot Drive with a crossing, because you've got the part there that slows it down right here, you got, you could put a four-way stop there. Not so much on Johnny Cake Drive, because when you have that curve and you have a stop sign there, people are not going to see it, they're still going to run it. And it would be only three-way, of course. So as you continue down, then you look at another stoplight, meet a stop sign at the Canyon Drive right there with a crosswalk as well. Because if you're turning inward and you make that left to try to go up Stagecoats, you still have that curb, but then you hit your first stop sign. And then you continue up further, and you go around a little curb there, and boom, you hit another stop sign. And then you can continue all the way down, and then you can make your right or left. But I think right there by Stagecoach Park, a stop sign between there or Johnny Cake Drive would be my suggestion, because you have that part there, and you're adding a crosswalk for people to cross over safely. We had the same issue in Kensington on Downey, where we just had people just fly through, and we finally put a stop sign on both on Kensington Drive and then down by the Cove Street, and it slowed traffic down completely. And it could be something looking in that way for just this neighborhood there. To slow it down.
So we have a process for determining whether or not stop signs are warranted. So this is, you are correct, I can cite Hometown Kyle, Kensington, just so, Steeplechase, a bunch of different places, Silverado, Spring Branch, where we've discussed putting in stop signs. So the the best practice I would suggest is to give direct staff to do a, what's called a warrant study. So they go out there, they actually, instead of just anecdotes, you know, one person and their stories or someone else and their stories, because I've driven through this subdivision probably 50 or 60 times, I have a lot of thoughts about that street and the way that this particular subdivision was designed. I was here when the zoning was approved for this particular item. It goes back that far. So the best way to handle it is to, and and it's a combination of engineer, public works director, and.
And chief of police.
Chief of police, they go out there, put the strips out, then they come back with a report and a recommendation on what they think is best to do, as opposed to us kind of just throwing out, you know, our thoughts just in general. And I'm sure they would come back with a recommendation for roundabouts. Right, Leon? Just kidding, joke, sort of a joke. But that would be my thought as far as how to move this forward, is to give that direction at this time. Councilor Tobias.
Okay, one last thing. Miss, Councilmember Flor scale, what about on the very top where it says Cat Gardner Drive? Any issues with people going up there when they booked that right turn going all the way up on the top, and you hit that right, that left curb, and people jarred all the way down? Are we looking at that as well? Because once all this gets developed out, you're looking at not only a south road, but you're also looking at another north road that will lead out the subdivision up on top in due time.
So my concern is, I see what you're saying, it goes up, but I think we could maybe alleviate that issue if we deal with so, Old Stagecoach Road and, and in that, and with that breadth, also Scott Street.
Okay.
Because I think that is their long-term concerns. When I was speaking with Mr. Coulterman, he made mention that I think he believed, I think he lived in, on Slaughter, he lived in a little town in Austin, not a little town, a little street in Austin, which eventually became a big street. And he said that he didn't, he moved away from there just for that. And so if we could kind of get in front of the issues that are going to come with Old Stagecoach Road and with Scott Street, I think that's going to be beneficial to everybody.
Okay, I thought you were looking at also just the neighborhood, but, yeah, that sounds fine, too.
So I'm sorry, are you saying you want to put stop signs on Stagecoach there to stop? Is that what you're saying?
No, no, I'm just saying, within the subdivision itself, if you look on the top, I was talking about Cat Gardner, if if those people up, further up in that subdivision are having the same issues, or if Cat Gardner eventually leads to Stagecoach, you'll have a north and a south entrance that leads to Stagecoach. But as far as there, I do like your recommendation, Mayor, that we have to get with the chief and get with Leon to see if stop signs are actually going to be beneficial in that area. Because you also have to look at the layout of the house. If you were to put stop signs, if it's going to be in somebody's yard, or if it's going to be in the middle of the street, you know, because you look at the houses down on the bottom. But I leave it up to the experts, because that's way above my pay grade.
Go ahead, Scott.
I might recommend that this be brought forward by the HOA. I know that in the past, the city has put forward signs based on residents within a neighborhood, and then the HOA has come back and asked us to remove those. So typically, if an HOA gets together, looks at the issue, and then makes a recommendation back to what we call our internal traffic task force, then we can do a traffic warrant and see if it meets TME 2CD.
Well, I have, like, 30 Facebook posts of very angry people who are worried about their safety in this area. So we can wait and bring this back after it goes to an HOA meeting. I don't think it's an irrelevant complaint. I think it's legit, and I think there's not, there's no harm in doing or having staff evaluate it now and then bring it back if if that's what staff recommends for additional information, I guess.
Yeah, I think that'd be great, speed up the process, just in case we're going down that road. I'd love to see the evaluation from staff and, but also reaching out to the HOA as well.
Mayor.
Councilor Tobias.
Can I go ahead and make a motion to direct staff to conduct that survey?
Traffic warrant.
Traffic warrants to also include recommendations from the HOA.
Second. Moved by Councilor Tobias, seconded by Councilor Ellison. Is there a discussion on the motion?
Yes, please.
Councilor Flor scale.
If possible, can we amend that to also look at Scott Street and Old Stagecoach Road and deevaluate those as well?
Hang on, we need, we need some scope. What do you mean, Scott Street and Old Stagecoach Road?
Well, they're in the map.
The intersections?
Just the roads altogether. The problem is, is those are going to go to, from two to four lane roads, and just, even if it's just confirming that that's what's best for that area, both on Scott and Old Stagecoach Road, that's, I just want to get a good understanding of that, because the problem is not going to go away, it's only going to be magnified if we take those roads and make them bigger, because then more people are going to use that cut through. So we're looking at two different issues.
More, more lanes equals more cars. That's like the universal rule.
Right, so that's what I'm saying.
Double the lanes, double the cars.
I would love staff to evaluate that as well, if Councilmember Tobias would be willing to amend his motion to include that.
Well, hang on, Mr. Sellers, go, go ahead.
So the Scott Street in particular was recommended in the transportation master plan to be a roundabout, because that will be the extension of our M150 West. So the four lane will terminate, you know, or will reduce back to two lane further south, but the four lane will then continue eastward as part of the highway relocation. Stagecoach, I don't believe, you know, that has been examined for any sort of traffic control.
Okay, well, I would like, if if possible, I'd like to just see, I don't think it's ever going to hurt anybody to reevaluate two or three times, especially when we're talking about our master transportation plan, which I know has already been amended. I think at the last council meeting, we amended it six times in one vote. So I think in order, it's, it's measure twice, cut once, kind of thing, and so I'm not opposed.
I just don't know what you're asking for us to measure precisely. The first, the motion is real clear, I just don't know what this motion is.
Just to look at, do you have a problem with Old Stagecoach Road getting, like, having them look at it and make sure that it should be a four lane road?
So you want them to do a warrant, a study? Because the, the current motion is for, is for us to do a warrant study for the, this subdivision's problems. If you're wanting to amend and add.
Yeah, I mean, my, my agenda item specifically talks about that. So I didn't make the motion, and so if he doesn't want to amend it, that's fine, I can make a motion afterwards.
Okay.
Let's get the first one. Yep, so, call for a vote, Mayor, please.
Okay, all right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Councilor Flor scale.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion for staff to evaluate Old Stagecoach Road and Scott Street for future plans and/or amendments to the transportation master, master plan to make sure that they, to confirm four lanes would be ideal in those areas.
Can we have any discussion before a second?
Well, there's a, there's a motion on the table to reevaluate Old Stagecoach and Scott Street as it relates to the, their capacity in the master transportation plan. Is there a second?
I'll go with second.
All right, the motion's made, the second by Councilor Flor scale, is seconded by Councilmember Parshley. Is there a discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Mayor Protem.
Yeah, real quick, Scott, so this is on the master transportation plan, and it's about adding the lanes, but how far on the progress are we from there? How, how long are we before we build it?
Well, you know, the, the R150 rerouting is part of the November bond question. It's also part of the, the potential Campo call in 2023. So the, it is one of the nine projects that has been brought forward and is being looked at currently by, which firm, Leon? CPNY. And CPNY just so happens to be the firm as well that, that did our transportation master plan. So I think they can look at that very easily. We can also ask them for some sort of a statement as to why they recommended Stagecoach to be a four lane road.
That's actually what I was looking for, so thank you very much. Great.
Councilor Ellison.
So I just want to clarify, so, and I certainly appreciate Scott's comment. So I know, and I certainly know that it says the four lanes on there. Ultimately, those things will have to be, there's a process to get there, and ultimately, there would most likely be a bond called for whatever that is. But, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Sellers, but even though it says four lane road, could it, that is just the right of way that it could be wide as, it could still be a three lane road, and then the additional right of way that's allocated could be a multi-use path or something like that? Correct?
In this case, and the recommendations for the, the number of lanes is a capacity issue unless a right of way issue. In this area in particular, we're already constrained with 80-foot right of way because of other sections in the roadway. So most likely, we'll continue that cross section through this area, at least on Scott Street. In moving east, it may widen out a little bit, but it is more of a capacity, you know, average daily traffic vehicle count.
Awesome. But then I, I don't think there's any issue with certainly going back to CPNY and having them clarify why they made the recommendation that they made and gave to us last year and give us further clarity on that. So I would support that.
All right, anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, agenda item number 25, discussion on possible action regarding, I'm sorry, 26, discussion on possible action regarding the city implementing a conflicts check policy for staff and elected officials. Councilor Flor scale.
Thank you. So it's important for me to ensure that the city of Kyle's ethical commitment to its residents will not be negative to, negatively affected by its rapid growth. A conflicts check is a process by which the city can ensure the residents of Kyle that neither a substantial nor perceived or potential conflict of interest exists between our city staff slash officials and or current, future vendors, contractors, subcontractors, developers, landowners, et cetera. Additionally, conflict checks help protect the city and guard it against libel. Additionally, conflict checks help protect the city and guard it against liabilities. Conflict checks should be run at the time when the city creates a relationship with the vendor slash contractor slash subcontractor slash developer slash landowner, et cetera, by mailing, emailing the name and information of all parties which will be doing business with the city to staff and officials. This should include names for all contractors, subcontractors, companies, company names to any general partners of limited partnerships, owners' names and possible adverse parties. City staff and officials will then respond to the email with a simple no conflict or conflict, in which case, an immediate follow-up with the city staff should occur. Conflicts can be run with software, which allows for information to be placed into a database for future checks. The city will have the ability to know if a recusal from a staff or an official is necessary, although the responsibility of a recusal should always remain on the individual staff or official. Building trust with our residents is and always will be one of my goals in being elected. Um, so my intention is to avoid accusations, maximize transparency and create trust. I am open to questions.
So anybody have any questions for Councilmember Flores-Kale? You have anything else?
Hmm, I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to research and bring back a conflicts check software, uh, in the second meeting, in, by the first meeting in June.
There's a motion made, is there a second? Made by Councilmember Flores-Kale, seconded by Councilmember Parsley, is there discussion on the motion? Mayor Protem.
Scott, is this as simple as the software, or is this going to take, um, more staff to, to run this? What, what does this detail?
Uh, I'm honestly unsure, I, I haven't heard of this software before, so we'll have to research it.
Paige, um, since you are probably aware of the conflicts check process, um, could you answer that question?
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor, Mayor Protem still had the floor.
Oh, sorry, okay, I thought I'd answer his question with Paige.
Sounds good. Well, I guess since we brought it up, go ahead, go ahead, Paige, I've got another question, but I'll ask.
I, I, I couldn't advise us to pricing, but I could, um, reach out first with some information to assist staff with that.
So, uh, my concern is, uh, having to hire another staff member to run this or to allocate a staff member from a short staff we have right now to, to have to dedicate time to this, because we're really short-staffed right now, is my concern.
I, I can't answer that question right now, but I, I might be able to provide some additional resources or sources of information to assist with that.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd love to get more information before I vote on this, because it's, uh, just to get all the details worked out. Okay? If, if Councilmember Kell would be okay with that.
Well, no, I think it's just, this is just obtained information.
Okay.
So this isn't to vote to get it, this is just for staff to research it, bring it back. If at that time they feel like it's too, it's going to be an additional employee, um, I'm, I'm not saying that's what I want. Um, I run conflicts checks all the time, it's a matter of minutes.
Okay.
So, and it's important, I think, to put that information in our database, just to kind of protect everybody.
Sounds good, I appreciate the explanation, thank you.
Uh, other discussion? Uh, all right, um, I, well, I'm not going to, I have, I have a different opinion about the, the vote, so if you want to roll-call vote, we can roll-call vote. Uh, I don't, this isn't a path that I think we should be going or that we should be spending staff resources and time. So if everybody else wants to go with it, y'all can, so is there more discussion? Roll-call vote.
Flores-Kale?
Yes.
Parsley?
Aye.
Rizzo?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Nay.
Ellison?
Nay.
Tobias?
Nay.
Bradshaw?
Nay.
All right, motion fails, four to three. Next up, agenda item number 28, considering possible action on RFP for construction manager at risk for the building project at 104 South Burleson.
Amber Lewis, Assistant City Manager, for the record. Before you, you have an RFP drafted, ready to go, uh, for a construction manager at risk for the 104 South Burleson project. And I'm here to take any questions. A construction manager at risk, just so you know, represents the owner, and they get a guaranteed max, maximum price. And anything that goes over the guaranteed maximum price, they are responsible for. So they have, um, a responsibility to stick to that budget.
Thank you, Amber, I, I particularly like this, because I feel like we've learned from a mistake, and the mistake was as related to the Public Safety Center and some of our other projects where we didn't get, see them at risk started until later. The Public Safety Center was the thing that we were, I think, probably most afraid of, because it was such a complex construction. Uh, and once we, once we started going down that path, the project started getting a lot more professional. Uh, we had, we had folks that were really there watching out for our best interests in a way that staff, it's, you know, internally can't do, so I'm, I'm happy to start this. But to be clear, this, uh, this is the RFQ, so we're, we're, there'll be a team formed, you'll bring back a, a recommendation for who, who that might would be.
Yes.
Uh, and they will have involvement over the actual, um, procurement of the, the plans as well, as opposed to just the construction part.
Right, they're going to lead us through that, mhm.
Uh, anybody have any questions for Amber? A motion to approve?
Second.
All right, it's moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Tobias. Uh, is there a further discussion? Mayor Protem.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm really excited about this coming forward. Uh, one reason why is, uh, when speaking with other cities, uh, I've gotten a lot of feedback about transitioning slowly, their fleet into electric vehicles, and the cost savings is, is, is crazy. I'll tell you right now, some of the savings that they're, um, the, the main savings they're getting is for, the costs they're saving from non-combustible engine maintenance. And they, when they first started implementing this issue, they had the same questions as us. Is this going to be, is this going to be best for the city? And I know Round Rock is doing it, and they have nothing but great things to say about it. City of Austin's doing it, we just toured their, uh, Smart Street City, um, a month ago, a little over a month ago. And, uh, I was really impressed by the stuff they're implementing there as well, so, uh, I'm really excited about this moving forward, so, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, agenda item 29, this is second reading, uh, in ordinance emitting chapter 53, uh, for the purpose of assigning original zoning to approximately 1.503 acres of land from Ag to CBD 1 for property located at 1400 West Center Street. Um, I'm not sure where Mr. Atkinson is, this is second reading, though, similar zoning, so I'll motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Bradshaw, is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Nay.
Uh, motion carries, uh, I read that six to ones, right to one, okay.
Did we skip 28?
No, we just did 28, oh, I skipped one, that's why, okay, I was like, what in the world? All right, so we need to hang on, because I, you were talking about 27 while I had read and we were, and Amber presented on 28, so there was confusion there.
Oh, yeah.
So to be clear, the vote, the vote we just took-
Was for 27.
Was, well, it was for, it was for 28, because that's the one I pulled up, pulled forward, so I-
Oh, sorry.
Right, so we need to pull 27 up again, or actually for the, the first time, but are you-
Well, here, here on the agenda, it says 27 was what we just went through right now. 28 is considering possible action for RP for construction managers risk building at 104 Burleson.
Right, that's the one I was discussing, oh, man, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, no.
That's why I was talking about CM at Risk and the, and the Public Safety Center.
Because it was-
Right.
Okay, all right.
All right, so we're gonna, so, but the vote we took on was 28. That was 104 South, is what, is what we voted on for CM at Risk, that's what Amber presented on. So do you have, do you want to go back, bring that up, so you can clarify your vote? Even though you took the vote was good, all right, so-
People already heard it, so.
All right, so, but we also just did 29, so now we're going to bring 27 back up, does that sound right to everyone? Okay, uh, considering possible action for, on an RFP, uh, seeking, uh, to hire an experienced and qualified vendor that can provide a turnkey solution of all equipment, correspondence, software and networking accessories warrants, uh, et cetera. Uh, this is, uh, related to vehicle track, because I couldn't figure out, we were talking about electric vehicles, I didn't understand.
Because I was on 27.
This is Kathy Roker, uh, item, uh, uh, go ahead.
We were patient.
I was on 27, I was on the right one.
Hi, Mayor, uh, Mayor Protem, Councilmembers Kathy Raker for the record. Julie Cruxton. This item is in front of you right now, um, just a little bit of a backstory. When we were, um, looking at getting EV charging stations at the PD building, we jumped through a bunch of hoops and got a contract and were proceeding with getting electric vehicle charging stations installed at the PD building. The company emailed us and said, hey, you have to complete this, 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 this and this before we can even order the charging stations. When we opened the document and started reading this, this, this and this, we realized it literally was going to touch practically every single department in the city. So we all started going, well, who's going to do that? And ooh, and pointing fingers. So we realized that this, getting EV charging stations in Kyle at city-owned properties is going to be a lot bigger deal than, um, it, it's not as easy as it sounds, to put it simple. So that is why we are proposing issuing this RFP for a turnkey solution where they take care of everything. And we picked the right contractor.
Okay, so Mayor Protem, your comments, if you want to say them again, now I understand the question.
Yeah, I, I was on 27.
Totally my fault, no, it's my fault all the way, I'm sorry.
And, uh, I just wanted to say that I'm really excited about this concept. Uh, bringing, you know, our city into the next generation of, you know, electric vehicles into our fleet is going to be beneficial for all the residents. Uh, the savings that we have from non-combustible engine, uh, maintenance is amazing. Speaking with some elected officials from Round Rock, they started off small and have, have now grown their fleet immensely and are really excited about, uh, the savings. They threw out millions of dollars of savings a year for this, their city, which is amazing. And, uh, something we could, uh, consider doing in the future as well, as we start to transition. And, um, I would really like, encourage everyone from, uh, the council here to reach out to any elected official from Round Rock and get some feedback, and that'd be great.
Just, uh, uh, more questions, comments? Councilor Tobias?
I want to go make a motion to approve.
Second, uh, motion by Councilor Tobias, seconded by the mayor that we approve agenda item 27. Uh, is there discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All, all opposed. Motion carries seven to zero, sorry, that was wonky.
No, thank you.
All right, if there are no objections, I'm going to skip 30, we'll do 31, 32 and then loop back. So next up will be 31, second reading, ordinance emitting chapter 53 of the City of Kyle, Texas, for the purpose of assigning original zoning to approximately 201.4 acres of land from Ag to single-family residential R11, uh, for property located at 1899 Six Creeks. Uh, this is, uh, just the zoning and it's just the second reading, uh, so I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Tobias, is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed.
Nay.
Motion carries six to one. Uh, next up, agenda item 32, uh, in ordinance of the City of Kyle, Texas, annexing 119.703 acres of land, more or less, uh, located at 1111 and 1113 Roland Lane, uh, approximately 3,000 feet northwest of the intersection of I-35 and Roland Lane, uh, et cetera. This is also, uh, second reading, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by the mayor, seconded by-
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
This is Will Atkinson.
Uh, hang on, hang on, Will, moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Tobias, is there discussion on the motion? Go ahead, Will.
Um, we're requesting it for it to be, um, the vote to actually be delayed until the 17th, so, but, so the zoning, the annexation and, um, the development agreement associated with the infrastructure, um, that they're going to require to do, uh, it all happens on the same meeting.
I'm glad you said that, that was very close to a complete annexation right there, so, all right. Uh, well, I'd like to rescind the, my motion and just postpone this item if that's okay, if there are no objections. Uh, all right, next up will be agenda item 30, uh, I have a, uh, recusal, uh, on this one, so Mayor Protem.
Yep. Second reading and ordinance, uh, mending chapter 53 of the zoning of the City of Kyle, Texas, for the purpose of modifying section 53 dash 1230 to restrict certain uses and amend the zoning use chart. Uh, Will Atkinson, this is, uh, the second reading, is there any discussion?
Uh, just one item that you can see on the screen, I edited the, uh, proposed ordinance to reflect what was discussed and voted on in the last meeting, which removed the, um, the bar and the microbrewery aspect of it, uh, to, and so now it only includes the geographic boundary limitations for the three uses.
Okay. Any other discussion? Councilmember Kell?
I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda, um, item number 30.
We got a, uh, got a second by, who was that?
Bradshaw.
Bradshaw? And, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
Five, one.
Oh, it's a five, one, sorry, I got an A. Sorry.
All right, that's it, um, motion to adjourn?
Second.
No, we're gonna, that's going to be postponed to the next one.
Thank you.
Uh, anything else? All right, motion to adjourn. We're adjourned.